Welcome to the Queen Anne's County Board Education Meeting for April the 7th, 2021. Do I have a motion to executive session?
Yes, sir.
Close session.
Mr. President, pursuant to the general provisions of Article 3, 305 and 3-104, I move for the board to meet in closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointed employees over whom this public body has jurisdiction, to consider matters that relate to negotiations, to consult with council, and to perform an administrative function.
And this is regular closed session. Do I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We'll be back at 6 o'clock. Good evening. Welcome back to the Queen Anne's County Board Education Meeting for April the 7th, 2021. Can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You have an agenda to have a motion to approve and amend?
Make a motion to open the session?
Second. I'd like to also make it a move that we go back into-
Sir, the motion is on the floor.
amend it.
Just to open the session.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor, 5:00. No motion to amend?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda at 12:00 to include reconvening in closed session.
I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, 5:00. You've had a chance to review the minutes.
Can I make a motion to accept the amended agenda?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries, 5:00. Okay now?
Yes, sir.
Approval administered March the 10th, 2021, open executive. Everybody had a chance to read them.
Mm-hmm.
Have any corrections or things or approval? Have a motion?
I have a motion to accept the open and close, open and executive close for March 10th, 2021.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries, 5:00. Okay. Dr. Kane, recognitions?
We do. We do have one recognition this evening. Thank you. We have one special recognition this evening. We have the Energizer Bunny, and so we're going to ask our sponsors to please come in. Greetings. Always good for our sponsors to be here. And our recognition this evening is for Ms. Ardina Hamilton. She is our Energizer Bunny. Yes, congratulations. You can use the mic forward. And our sponsors are going to come forward as well while I read these wonderful comments presented by Mr. Kentop, your supervisor. At Arise Academy, Ms. Hamilton serves as a special education teacher, making sure that IEPs and 504 plans are implemented in our classrooms to help students succeed. Ms. Hamilton also serves as our testing coordinator for all state testing and at times fills in as acting administrator on campus. Wonderful. Ms. Hamilton goes above and beyond with her students, following up with them and their families at home, constantly communicating information between staff and families, and generally being a go-to adult for many of the students. While doing this during the day, Ms. Hamilton is also continuing her education through graduate courses, representing Queen Anne's County Public Schools on a state works, work group for school climate, and serving on the Education Equity Committee for the county. The 2021 school year started with Arise Academy temporarily having a staff assigned to address a need at another school. And Ms. Hamilton, who also has certification in that teachers area, volunteered to teach the course on top of her other responsibilities. This expanded into the second semester as we were not able to secure a substitute for that particular teacher. Ms. Hamilton has now picked up a total of four courses in that area while still keeping up her other responsibilities. We're grateful to have her, have a staff full of people at Arise Academy who are willing to go above and beyond for students. Ms. Hamilton is leading the way with all she has taken on this year, and she is truly deserving of the Energizer Bunny Award. Congratulations. And we do have your supervisor, Mr. Kentop, come on forward. Is there anything that you'd like to say?
She's too tired.
Great, great. She's been doing everything.
I do say thank you to Mr. Kentop for recognizing all that we do as a team and recognizing the work that I put in. It's a pleasure because everything we do is for the kids, so wherever I can step in and be of service, I'm willing and ready to do so.
And it shows tonight, so thank you very, very much. And on behalf of our sponsors and all of us, the board members, congratulations, Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we have board members' involvement. Tammy, you'd like to start off?
Sure. On Tuesday, March 9th, I was involved with a Zoom meeting with the Chamber of Commerce as well as Adam Tully and other key stakeholders discussing the new culinary arts program, which Queen Anne's County Public Schools, a partnership which has to be college, will be offering beginning in the fall. 10 students, five from Queen Anne's County High School and five from Kent Island High School. The course provides instruction into food service and hospitality industries, also offering an opportunity for the Serve Safe credential. The purpose of the Zoom meeting was to inform businesses of the opportunity and provide details about the Maryland Youth Apprenticeship Program, which has been a long time coming and personally grateful that it's happening. Also, on March 9th, I stopped by the Queen Anne's County High School to lend my support to the Queen Anne's County Retired Personnel Association's donation drive to collect classroom supplies for the Judy Center. And I understand from Mr. Richard McNeil that the event was very successful. The superintendent search is still continuing. The members have interviewed seven candidates. The first round of interviews were held in March. The second round will be conducted next week, and updates are coming. Thank you.
My involvement was mostly virtual for some of the sports things. JV, of course, I was able to attend all so far, whether in person or virtual or standing outside, sitting in my car outside with a fence watching. And so far, JV football, Queen Anne's County High School is undefeated.
Yay.
Varsity, I couldn't view all of them, but the ones I could tune in for, their season was turning around just before they went into quarantine, so hopefully they come out fighting for their last home game. And I tried to see as many games as I could in other sports, but the live feed is not that great. Not all schools offer it, so it was challenging. It's been challenging for the parents as well and frustrating. So that's something that perhaps we need to look into because sometimes our equipment wasn't even keeping up with the game. The action was here and the camera was still there, so you're not sure what's happening. And it was also nice to see mini bands out at some of the, all the sporting events, giving them a chance to do some live performances as well, since they've also been on hold like some of the other activities this year. So even though some of the JV games were away, we still attended. Some schools allowed us to stand at the fence outside, some didn't, some we had to stay in our cars. It varies from school to school, but like I said, not all school has that live stream ability, so I felt more comfortable as a parent being there. I voiced my concern earlier. At least two games, we saw an ambulance go out, so I'm one of those parents that's there, whether I can be in there or not, just in case. But it's at least nice to see that the kids are playing again, so.
Well, we're continuing our chores of the schools, and that's been really interesting. Really impressed with how quickly the principals and all the teachers and the kids have adjusted, you know, to going back a full-day hybrid. And so appreciative of the principals, you know, welcoming us and giving us a picture into what they're doing. Seems as if what we hear at every single school is a sub-issue, so I'm hoping that we can maybe do some work around that. I haven't attended any games. I have attended a couple practices because you can watch from afar with binoculars, and it's really great to see them, you know, run and playing and jumping and just doing the things that they should do outside, so that's, that was nice. I went to one at Queen Anne's County High School and one at Kent Island, so that was nice.
Yeah, okay. So as Helen mentioned, we are continuing our school visits. As she said, it's, it's really been an enlightening experience. I'm seeing the great things that the teachers are doing in the classroom and how they're juggling, you know, kids on the screen and, and kids in the, in the classroom, but very impressed with everybody, the principals and the teachers. I did want to take a second because I know we're going to be, the second read of the equity, equity policy, education equity policy is set for later on tonight, but I was looking at the presentations that'll be starting after public involvement, and I see the first one is educational equity, and then another one goes into the extended works, and they all mention that equity, education equity section of the CO-MAR. So just to kind of put things into perspective before we get into that, since I might have a chance later on, I don't want to interrupt anybody. So just so everybody knows, the CO-MAR does require us to have an equity policy, and probably the main objective of the equity, education equity policy is to, it's twofold. Number one, to raise achievement of all of our students, and number two, to narrow and eventually eliminate the achievement gap between our minority students and the rest of the student body. So if you look at the CO-MAR, that, that really is the main objective, those two. So while we were doing our visits, we were, we've been talking to principals. Dr. Kane's been with us. We've talked to teachers. I've talked to parents, you know, in the community, stakeholders in the community. The first read of the policy, the proposed policy, got a lot of attention on the internet. There were a lot of posts onto the website. I reviewed most of those. I think there was upwards of 170 the last time I looked. And one thing I can say for sure, 100%, is that everybody wants to see the achievement gap narrowed and eventually eliminated. We want to see our minority students achieving as high as everybody else, and we want to see everybody raised up in achievement. So I think that's a great thing. That's something we should be proud of as a county and as a school system. Now, how we go about doing that in the broad terms, you know, what's the plan, how we're going to meet that objective, that's where people begin to differ. Some people believe that the equity policy that's going to be implemented, and has been implemented by the state mandated to the districts, is the, you know, the panacea that's going to cure the equity gap or the achievement gap. Others believe that it should, we should have an equity policy, but a little more beefed up, and, you know, borrowing from other theories and that kind of thing. Others have mentioned that, you know, we've already got an equality policy. We've got a nondiscrimination and equality, access to all the school resources. Why do we need an equity policy? So we're going to have an equity policy because Maryland's requiring us to do it, and, and I think the solution's going to be somewhere in the middle. But I do believe that everybody has raised very good points, and I think the key thing to focus on is we got the same objective, we have the same goal in mind. It's doable. It'll be difficult, but I think with the, the support that we've seen from the community and how, you know, we go about doing it is going to be the challenge, and I'm looking forward to it, and I'm looking forward to the presentations that we're going to be having tonight. So thank you.
Starting off, I'd like to send my condolences to the Draper family. Elizabeth Draper Bryce passed away a couple weeks ago. She was a former board member and also the only member of Queen Anne's County has been the past president of MAE, so I want to tell that family, you know, we appreciate what she did for us. Also, last night, we were scheduled to meet with the commissioners for our budget, and that was rescheduled for tomorrow night at 5:30. We'll be doing that then. And I also must say, it's been a pleasure the last couple days to get stuck behind school buses. It's, I like to see them on the road. Never thought I'd say that, but it's a pleasure to see all those yellow buses running around and doing a good job and everybody, you know, getting back to normal as close as we can. So thank you and everybody for, you know, working with everything, both staff, parents, students, and everybody. Thank you. Dr. Kane?
Absolutely. So I've had my normal Pazam state superintendent meetings. Of course, we continue to meet with Maryland Health Department each Friday. We didn't meet this past Friday. I continue to have my meetings with the Eastern Shore superintendents, and they've been very productive meetings, been able to keep on top of what's happening in all of the Eastern Shore districts. We also have had a multicultural advisory committee meeting with Chesapeake College Task Force on Achieving Academic Equity and Excellence for Black Boys with the State Department. And our presentation for that will happen next month. It was scheduled for April, the end of April, but it's going to be, it's going to happen in May, so that'll be great. And we'll be presenting to state superintendents within the next week or two. Also, we were, we had the great, great pleasure of distributing or visiting during school visits for the Teacher of the Year finalists, and that was, that's always a lot, a lot of fun, so we were able to do that. It's been a good time, and we are so looking forward to Friday, the 16th, where we, I think Friday is the 16th, where we have, yes, got thumbs up, where we have the sort of recognitions for the Teacher of the Year and for the Employees of the Year. So we are really, really looking forward to those, those events. It's going to be a lot of fun. I have some great news, and I'm going to, yep, come on, my team is coming in, some really, really super great news. We applied for Queen Anne's County under the leadership of two of our supervisors that are coming forward right now. Amy Smith, who supervises math, and Michael Page, who supervises science and PE, health, and environmental education, wrote a grant. It was a competitive grant for $1 million, and we just got the word, or at least we found the word, on the governor's website this afternoon that we have been awarded that $1 million grant. A lot, a lot of work, and well done, well done. So if you want to take a couple of minutes, just a couple of minutes, to talk a little bit about what that grant is about. It enhances our work around mathematics and gifted and talented and environmental ed, which is our absolute love. Please take a moment. So-
Sit down, please.
Sorry.
I guess for the record again, I'm Amy Smith, mathematics supervisor and gifted and talented supervisor. Good evening, board members, and Dr. Kane, executives, team. We had the pleasure of writing this, and my portion of the grant really focused around some summer engagement opportunities to reengage students over the next several summers. It's not just of this summer, it's over the course of the next three years that we'll have the ability to bring in students, to have them engage in STEAM camps, so there will be some STEM technologies, engineering, arts, and mathematics, but really high interest for kids to engage and participate in and enjoy coming into the school in kind of a fun environment while learning and experiencing a summer camp type of experience. It also allows us to get some summer resources, text, that kind of things in hands of students so that they can practice and remediate some of the skills that they had over this year, but also give them some, some lesson trajectories to help build some skills and enhance them before they come back into the school year for the fall. Go right ahead.
All right. Good evening, board members, Dr. Kane, executive team. For the record, my name is Michael Page. I'm the supervisor of science, PE, and health and environmental education, and the portion of this grant that I wrote was in regards to expanding our schools in terms of, you know, we have these brick-and-mortar schools that we can't really expand any of the space, so the idea was to create outdoor educational classrooms. And this goes, you know, we're going to have these outdoor classrooms for the students, staff, that they can utilize to do multiple, multiple things. So a lot of our environmental education curriculum that we'll have there, so it'll be the pavilion with the, with chairs, with seating, with all kinds of resources for our students in order to do things outside and expand our schools to those, to our schoolyards. So we are really excited, really happy, you know, we got this-
Really happy.
Really happy. We got this, you know, just, just now, really, so.
Thank you. Thank you both. Well done.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's, that's part of our great news, and we just are so excited to be able to offer this for children and get some outdoors, learning outdoors and engaged in STEAM activities, so we just are really, really excited about that. More to come on that. And also, last but certainly not least, I'll go ahead and make my announcement that as I depart transition from Queen Anne's County Public Schools, I have accepted a position for professor of practice at University of Pennsylvania. I will be working in the ed leadership program. I am so very, very excited. University of Pennsylvania Graduate School of Education is the number one Ivy League university for graduate school education in the country, and they are excited to have me. I am so excited to be there and looking forward to doing all that I can to serve that learning community, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And that does it for me.
Okay. We have our student board members. Ms. Smith?
Natalie Smith, student member of the board for Queen Anne's County High School. In the month of March, we had, we were continuing to honor Student Employee of the Month. So far, we have 796 students receiving electronic positive referrals. And then on March 17th, the PTS, the PSAT was administered to approximately 103 students. And then on March 24th, the SAT was administered to approximately 122 students. Also, Andrew Williams, a junior, was named Performing Arts Teen of the Week for his outstanding contributions to the Queen Anne's County High School band program. And upcoming in April, 117 students will take certification exams in effort to earn certifications for various CTE programs. Spring sports are beginning April 17th. Students will compete in baseball, bocce, boys and girls lacrosse, softball, boys and girls tennis, and track and field. On April 22nd, 865 students will begin the four-day, full-day, adjusted, hybrid schedule. And then we're super excited, June 2nd administration said we can graduate in the stadium. So, yeah. Thank you.
We hope it's a sunny day.
I hope so. If it rains, I'm going to cry.
We got a day, we'll back it up.
When do you order your caps and gowns, or is that already started?
I already ordered them. I think we picked them up beginning of May. I'm excited for graduation as well.
It's been a different year.
For sure. So Alexa Gross, Kent Island High School student member of the board. So in the past month of March, we've had quarter-three interims be sent out on March 8th. We also had a very successful school SAT day for the juniors, and that was on March 24th. Fall sports have been in full effect, and there's been over 300 athletes playing, so that's very exciting. And then we had the Student of the Month awards, and students were scheduling for the '21, '22 school year. And then while in April, quarter-three interim, or quarter-three report cards will be emailed home on Friday, the 9th. And then spring sports also begin at Kent Island on April 17th. The four-day return to school option will begin on April 22nd, and email surveys were sent home to families where they can give their choice for if they want their student to return. And then the April Student of the Month awards is on April 30th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Suspicion? Mark, do you have your?
Oh, you know what? I don't think I do.
Here, you got it.
No. Okay.
Glasses?
No, no, I'm good. For now. We ask all speakers to keep in mind the following guidelines. Speakers should sign their roster, including their telephone number and their address. Comments should be limited to three minutes in length. Comments longer than three minutes should be submitted in writing. Questions or statements to the board should relate to a matter of general policy over which the board has authority. Comments about actions or statements of individual staff members are not appropriate for public comment and should be referred to the superintendent of schools or the board president. If you have a specific question, the board will make sure an appropriate staff member responds to your question. The board respects your desire and your right to convey your message freely, but asks as a courtesy to this board and our citizens to show respect for all.
Thank you. Rich?
Good evening, everybody.
I need your name and address just for the record.
Richard McNeil, 261 White Marsh Road, Centerville. I'm here representing the Retired School Personnel Association with a couple comments. Enjoying the spring weather. Just let everybody know on, on the board that we thankful had a March drive-through, as I talked about back in the beginning of March, where instead of having our general meeting and our luncheon, we had a collection for the family center up in Sellersville. It was a wonderful day. We had a good turnout. We had enough materials in terms of craft supplies, school books, pencils, all that kind of stuff that they use in that, in that center actually overflowed the back of an RV. And a lot of our members came through as they did before, and we appreciate everybody who supported that. So again, thanks for letting us use the drive-through into the bus parking lot at the high school. We did that after everybody left, so we didn't get run over and they didn't get hurt. We are in the process, just to keep you up to date, of our annual scholarship fund drive. We've already been, since we're not meeting, it makes it a little bit more of a challenge like everything, but our members, again, are very supportive of that. I've been working with both high schools and their guidance counselor program so that we can advertise this as best possible with all graduating seniors who are going to pursue a avenue or career in education. Again, we plan on giving at least two, one at each high school, we hope, if we get that many applications and so forth. And also with a, a third possible one for a book scholarship for a runner-up kind of a thing, so that's underway for that. I'm hoping to get and talk with HR about possible retirees for this year so we can make contact with them before they all exit in, in June. We are very hopeful to, and we're in the preliminary plans of trying to find a location in July outside where we can actually gather together and celebrate last year's retirees and this year's retirees. Since we have not been able to meet, we're, we're looking at some, a couple venues that we can possibly enjoy that way and get back together again. And last thing, I'd like to, again, thank the board for their continued support of our healthcare package. When I talk to, I repeat this all the time, when I talk to early retirees, I say, "One of the biggest expenses you'll have will be your healthcare package," and, and how important that is. And so just thank you for your continued support on that, okay? Thank you very much for your time. for your time.
Can you give us your name and address for the record?
Sure. My name's Bill Davis, 144 Wynight Road, and I live in Queenstown, Maryland. First, I have to give huge praise to the teachers at Centerville Middle School. As I have worked from home since the beginning of the pandemic, I get, I get to hear interactions with teachers and students I otherwise would not be privy to if kids were in the classroom. The teachers whom have taught my son and daughter have been absolutely phenomenal. One of my son's teachers, mom was dying, and I overheard her say, "Guys, if I have to leave abruptly, it's because my mom is dying." If that's not commitment and dedication to your profession and students, I don't know what is. However, the divisive leadership in this county's Board of Education is something I cannot remain silent on anymore. Anyone who knows me knows this is way out of character for me, but enough is enough. Because we are a rural county, majority white, majority whom voted for Trump, with many wonderful multi-generational farming families, with many whom love to hunt fish and run a trot line, that does not make us a racist community. I sit at home listening to past board meetings, listen to the budget discussions, hear about declining enrollment and the associated reduction in funding. Yes, many students have moved to private schools due to the pandemic and lack of in-person schooling in the county public school system. However, you know what happens when the parents and students get there? They don't get this work nonsense, woke nonsense shoved down their throats. They don't get opinions and false narratives introduced at every opportunity. We toured a private school across the bridge, and the first thing I asked the lady giving us the tour was, "How do you handle social justice or political issues of the day?" Her response was, "You will never know if any of our teachers or leadership are Democrat or Republican." I wanted to sign the paperwork on the spot. I seriously doubt their parents get letters from leadership talking about the injustice and systematic racism against Michael Brown and Freddie Gray. These are opinions because someone does not like an outcome. There is no place in the public school system for these opinions, and in my opinion, false narratives. I seriously doubt their teachers are upset when a public board meeting, when in a public board meeting, leadership states that white female teachers are biased against black males in the way punishment is handed out. That is a rather broad brush to paint with. I have spoken to several white female teachers, whom by the way, I can only assume make up the vast majority of teachers in this county, at the local YMCA, at athletic practices, and at the grocery store over the past several weeks, all from different schools throughout the county. And every one of them was extremely upset with this perceived mischaracterization. If this bias is prevalent in our county, this data should be made public, and those involved should be removed immediately because myself and no one that I know of would tolerate such racist actions. I read an article in the Baltimore Sun which referenced a county study from 1994 which identified the issue. I can only hope that is not what we are basing this on. We, we all know how this will end. A seven-figure settlement in the federal racial discrimination complaint will most likely be made, leaving this county and school system further divided. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for listening to an opposing view.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all, Carl, or presentations?
Absolutely. We, our first presentation this evening is with Ms. Julie Forbes and Mr. Matt Evans. And they're going to talk with us this evening about educational equity, the hot topic of the day. They've got some facts to share with everyone. And we felt that it was important because there's a lot of conversation, as Mr. Schifinelli alluded to earlier, in the community. And, and lots of misinformation is out there. There have been, I've gotten information back about some critical race theory and, and all that kind of stuff. There's a lot of rhetoric out in the community, misinformation. All people need to do is simply talk to a teacher, an administrator, a child, and they probably would ask you what in the world that is. So thank you for being here, Ms. Forbes and Mr. Evans. Please talk to us about educational equity.
Good evening, President Smith. Dr. Kane, member of the Board, Executive Committee. We have some data to share regarding educational equity. First, the purpose, we do want to communicate and provide data about our, our Queen Anne's County Public School students and provide more information about the proposed educational equity policy and regulation. As you know, the background, in June 2019, the State Board of Ed granted permission to publish COMAR 13A.01.06, Educational Equity. These requirements state each school system shall develop an educational equity policy and regulation. And the proposed equity policy and regulation was modeled directly after a sample policy that was provided to us by the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, MAB.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Julie Forbes, and I'm the Supervisor of Accountability Assessment and Data Management. And I'm going to share some data with you tonight. Some of it may be familiar from prior presentations. A lot of this is actually available to the public right now. And at the very bottom of this slide, a really great resource, just for members of the community and the public, is the Online Maryland Report Card, which can be found at, I'm going to strain my eyes here, reportcard.msdmariland.gov. And so there's a lot of great information on that site available to the public, not only for our school system, but for other school systems in Maryland. So the first slide I'm going to share with you captures the enrollment that we had in 2019-20, just in terms of our different student groups. And I share the 2019-20 data with you because typically, we report out, for the most part, about a year later after the data becomes public. So again, this came from that report card site. And so you can really see here a breakdown of our different student groups by race and ethnicity, by different student groups, and also by gender. Okay? And the next, oh, you can go ahead, sure. Now, the next slide would be something that you wouldn't necessarily find, but is something we're sharing with you, is if you look at our advanced course, advanced placement courses, and then compare that with our overall enrollment. And so typically, students take advanced placement courses, also known as AP, typically around grades 11 and 12. So those are the grades we pulled to make sure we had a pretty even comparison point. So what this slide shows you is the percentage of students that make up the entire enrollment in AP amongst those 11th and 12th graders compared to the overall enrollment in general of our 11th and 12th graders. And of course, as a goal, we want those to kind of mirror each other as much as possible. And so what you'll see here is, and I'll just kind of go through our different student groups. For example, our Black and African American students make up 4.3% of the enrollment in those AP courses, while they comprise of 6.77% of the enrollment in 11th and 12th grade. Hispanic and Latino students make up 5.33% of the AP course enrollment. And our 6.51% of the overall enrollment in grades 11 and 12. Students who are identified as two or more races, 4.3% versus 4.6. Our white students, 84.22% versus 80.56. Our students who qualify for free and reduced meals make up 9.43%. And currently, our 16.32% of that population. And you can also see with our female students, they comprise 57.58% of the AP enrollment, while they're about 49.39% of the student body in 11th and 12th. And our male students are about 42% versus about 50.61. So it just kind of gives you a comparison point to take a look at. So you may notice that some of the student groups may not be represented on this chart. And usually, that's due to the size of the student group. So we have to keep that, we can't necessarily share that with the public for confidentiality purposes.
I just ask for clarification.
Of course, yeah.
When we're higher than the enrollment, that means you're taking two classes. Is that how that number gets above?
We actually counted students only one time. So even if you took multiple courses, and that could be something you could look at for a different data point, could be students who are taking multiple classes. But how we looked at the data was if a student was taking at least one course, we only counted that student one time.
So I, I hate bar graphs, so explain to me. Sorry.
Yeah, absolutely.
Math was not my forte. So you're telling me that that 6.7% of our African American total enrollment, 11th to 12th graders, 4.3% of that 6.7% are taking AP classes? Am I correct in that?
Close. It was a great clarifying question, so thank you for that. So the blue bars represent of, so if you were to take the total AP enrollment, so if we take all of the students in AP, 4.3% of those students are African American.
Okay.
If we take our 11th and 12th grade student body, 6.77% are African American. So it's not of the population, but it's of the total students enrolled in that.
So you have, you may have some 10th graders taking AP.
Correct.
And that would be in that 4.3%?
We did not include 10th grade in this because it's such smaller numbers.
But then again, I mean, so I'm back to it again. So if it's 6.7% of the 11th, 12th graders are African American, and 4.3 of them are taking AP, am I, where am I missing this?
Are you saying that 64% of the African American students in 11th and 12th grade are taking an AP class? Is that what you're saying?
So I can share an example. So currently, we have 78 African American students enrolled in 11th and 12th grade. Of those, 21 are taking AP courses. So the blue bar represents of the total AP enrollment. So if we just take, if we-
An 11th and 12th grade.
An 11th and 12th grade, right. And the reason we included the 11th and 12th grade is that's where you see the majority of students in AP.
Yes.
And so if you start to bring in 10th grade or even 9th, we just wanted it to be a fair representation. We could always break that down as well. But this way, you're comparing two consistent grade levels. So 11th and 12th versus 11th and 12th. But, you know, we could certainly go back and look at 9th and 10th and kind of tease that out as well. And, and that's the great thing with data. We can always drill down further, look at it a different way.
So essentially, it's about 28%? Is that?
24.5%.
24.5%?
Yeah, of the students, correct.
Right, of the African American students.
That's right.
Oh, you're right, 28%.
And so, I'm trying to see if I could give you another example. So for example, if we were to look at the free and reduced meals, so students who qualify for free and reduced meals, so that's 16.32%. There's about 188 students in 11th and 12th grade who qualify for free and reduced meals. And we have 46 students who are enrolled in AP. So you could say roughly, you know, a little less than about 25%.
Go one bar graph over and explain to female, females to me.
Yeah, absolutely. So what this tells us is that even though our male and female students, you know, are, are pretty balanced in terms of 11th and 12th grade enrollment, we have, when we pulled the data for this, we had 1,152 students enrolled in those grades that we were looking at. So this tells us that there's more female students enrolling in AP courses than our male students. And so they're actually making up, our female students are actually making up almost 58% of the enrollment. So our male students are making up about 42.
Okay. Ms. Forbes, I'm sorry, because I thought I understood this until we went into more detail about this. So where, let's go back to the free and reduced meals.
Yep.
Where, what is 9.43%? What does that even mean?
Of the total enrollment. So if we look at every student who's taking at least one AP course, if we took them together as a whole, how many students qualify for free and reduced meals of the total students enrolled who qualify? Okay. Okay. And so the next one captures honors course enrollment, again, in a very similar way. So the orange bar captures each student group, what percent of the enrollment they represent. And the blue bar captures what percent of the honors enrollment the students represent.
I think I'm, I'm having trouble still. It's so misleading in the way it's laid out. I would rather hear the percentage of the number of our students that are taking AP. Well, I'm just not getting it. I'm sorry.
So I'm not getting the chart either. I thought I had it, and it's just not working.
No, no, it's okay.
So the first chart that you looked at was the percentage of students taking AP.
Okay.
Right. The second one is honors courses.
Yeah.
Well, I understand, you know, okay, I'm sorry, because I don't want to go past this without me understanding it.
Sure.
So let's go with Black slash African American. Okay, you have 6.77% saying that's a percent of total enrollment. They make up that percentage of our total enrollment of 11th and 12th grade. Is that correct?
That's right.
Well, in, in this, it's 9 to 12.
Well, for honors, if you go back to the AP chart.
It says, I'm, I'm still on AP.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. And so the 4.3%, it says that's a percent of AP enrollment. So I would, I was assuming that of the 7.6.77% that are African American, then 4.3 is 64% of the 6.77. And that's what's enrolled in AP. But you're, I guess I'm not understanding what the blue bar means if it doesn't mean the percentage is as it relates to the total population.
So typically, you know, and, and next time, I'm happy to share this in a different kind of format, you know, whatever's pleasing to the Board. So for this purpose, typically, when we look at enrollment, what ideally we want to see is the enrollment of our group match the enrollment of the population. That's always the goal, and that's typically what we're striving for. And so in this case, what it does is it gives you a visual so that you can see if there are any gaps.
So the two or more races are actually almost equal, right? I mean-
I mean, yeah. So you can see, yeah, so you can see where the gaps exist. Exactly. So it just, it gives you kind of a nice visual. Because again, the goal is we want to get those as close as possible. And when we set goals as a system, it's to kind of start closing those gaps a bit, right? Because if you're, again, you're, let's, let's talk about our students who receive free and reduced meals. So if they make up 16.32% of our 11th and 12th graders, if we were to completely chose, close that gap, we would have 16.32% of our AP enrollment also be our free and reduced, those who qualify for that.
Right. Doesn't 9.43% mean 58% of the 16.3? I'm, I'm not understanding the two differences.
Yeah, well, it's, it's two separate, it's two separate things. Yeah. And, and, you know, I'm happy, again, next time, we could put it in a pie chart.
Okay, so-
You know, so 16.32% of the amount of people in 11th and 12th grade are on free and reduced meals.
That's correct.
Of that number, 9, 9% of them are taking AP classes?
9.43% of all the students enrolled in AP also qualify for free and reduced meals.
Okay, but they're a part of that 16%?
They are, yes.
Okay. Okay, well, that, okay. And there's no, there's no discerning what race they are. They just are on free and reduced meals?
Yeah. And we can look at that kind of data, and we did. We cannot share it publicly because-
That's okay. No, that's all right. I mean-
But we do look at it internally, like as a system, when we're setting school goals and district goals. But it's just, we, we become limited in what we can share in a public setting.
That's okay. But what we are doing, those people who qualify for free and reduced meals, those students are taking AP. It is available to them, and they are taking it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. Absolutely. Okay. And so-
Got that one.
And so the next one captures our honors courses. And so again, we're, we're just, when we look at, you know, setting goals as a system, our goal, of course, is to, again, try to, you know, we, our, our goal is to capture the enrollment in courses to match kind of similar to the enrollment of the student group. So again, the orange bar represents if we were to take the total population in grades 9 through 12, what percentage of that total, of all of the 9th and 12th, 9th through 12th graders that that student group represents. So for example, of all of our students in grades 9 through 12, about 5% identify as two or more races. 79.14% of those students in grades 9 through 12 identify as white. 18.71% are identified as free and reduced meals. 49.17 are female. 50.83 are male. So then, if we take that whole population of grade 9 through 12, and then we drill down just to students enrolled in honors, and we take that as an overall population of those students, we then can kind of go down those blue bars and say, okay, so 3.92% of the total number of students in grade 9 through 12 who are taking at least one honors course are Black or African American. 6.13% are Hispanic or Latino. 4.42% two or more races. 83.76 white. 11.61% qualify for free or reduced meals. And 57.62 are female. And 42.38 are male. So again, we see that similar gap, particularly in the gender, where we see more female students enrolled in honors than we do male. Okay, so this is our last year that we had available of the MCAP results. So that's the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program. As we know, due to the school closure this spring, and last spring, we did not administer those assessments. So this is the last year of data that we have. This is directly from the Maryland Report Card website. And again, what it does is it shows you, this first set shows you all of our students. Now, this is broken down exactly how MSDM- Now, this is broken down exactly how MSDE shares the data, and it's by the grade band. So in this case, the blue bar captures our elementary students. So when we look at the all column, this tells us that in 2018-19, when students took the English Language Arts MCAP, 55.5% of all of our students, when we looked at them combined, were proficient in English Language Arts in elementary school. When we looked at our middle school students, 63.8% showed proficiency. And then when we look at that gray bar, it's 72.6%. So then, we can move to our different student groups, and you may notice there's more student groups on this chart than the other, and that reason is because, because we're looking at the whole district population now, it's a larger population of students. So for privacy and confidentiality purposes, we can look at a bigger group of students. We get a little more information. And every year, when we do have this state assessment result, you know, principals, their leadership teams dig into this quite a bit throughout the year and really drill down into it for their school by grade level, by classroom, and really look at it quite deeply. And so again, when we start to look at proficiency levels, we can see those proficiency levels in the different grade bands by different student groups. And I know we've spent so much time on MCAP, so I know this is probably quite familiar. Now, the one thing you'll notice that you're not seeing on this chart is the breakdown by female and male. And the reason for that is if you go to the Report Card website where they break it down by the levels, they don't break it down that way. So I actually went ahead and looked at it grade level by grade level, which you can do. And I'd encourage you go to that Report Card website, and you will see, similarly to the honors and AP, there are similar proficiency gaps between our male and female students. And I know that in one of the later presentations, Mrs. Patton's going to speak a little bit more about that, particularly around English Language Arts.
So there's an anomaly with the English learners? You see 22.6% of the elementary kids are proficient in English Language Arts? And then by the time, I don't know, by the time they get to middle school, or kids that enter in middle school, maybe that's it. They're, they're down to 10.5, and then at high school, they're 8.3.
Sometimes what happens is that students exit out of the English Language status, and so they become more proficient as they move up the grade levels. And so sometimes, by the time we have English learners in middle and high school, there's a chance that they're new to us, so they recently had that English learner status. Or sometimes we have students who, you know, need more supports to attain proficiency in the language and can become more in like a long-term English learner status. And so then more supports are provided to that student to help them achieve proficiency. But that's a great observation.
And the other thing I see on Hispanic, they're, that's the one group that goes up, but then in high school comes back down, where everybody else has made good strides from middle to high.
And she just said that they may have already opted out.
Or they may not have been with us.
Or they may not have been with us the whole time.
They've entered into the high school.
Yeah, they, some of the high school students may have just got here.
And, and so for this one as well, the high school bar captures the English 10 exam, just for background, and this also is based on students when they take it the first time. Because sometimes students do have to take the high school assessments multiple times. And so this is the first time they took that 10th grade English exam for that gray bar. But it is interesting, and I think overall, great to see that growth by high school in many of our groups, not all, but in many of our groups, you do see that growth by high school, which I think says a lot.
So I know we're looking at the gaps between, you know, race and ethnicity, et cetera, but if you look at all, so 55.5 were proficient? Then 44.5 were not proficient?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yeah. And again, this kind of data is just helpful because it helps us set more targeted goals as a system, because ultimately, we just kind of, we want to keep working together to close these gaps and bring, you know, all of our, all of our students, of course, we want to increase proficiency, but also look at our student groups individually and see, you know, what are their strategies we can use to continue that work?
Right, narrow the gaps.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, and then the next one captures mathematics. So again, same, same kind of context I provided earlier, it's reported on the Report Card website, it's by grade band, so you have your elementary, middle, and high. And again, the male, female breakdown, with the exception of a few grades, there were a few grades, probably a little bit more, where boys outperformed in mathematics. So it was slightly different in that way, the gaps weren't as profound that we saw between gender, which again, I know that would be a whole separate chart, but it is all available to the public, so just wanted to point that out.
Now, I found this interesting, that all of middle school, across the board, pretty much, came down and then picked up again in high school. Is there something going on in middle school that, do we know what happened the year before? Are we tracking this? Because that's significant.
Yeah, so when we look at, it's interesting with math. So in middle school, we have students take 6th grade math, 7th grade math, and then in 8th grade, they're either taking Algebra I, if they're in the Algebra, if they're in the Algebra I course, or they're taking Math 8. So sometimes, that can influence it, because typically, your students taking Algebra I in 8th grade tend to perform quite well on that exam because they're already in Algebra I by 8th grade, while you sometimes see your 8th grader struggle. And then your students who are taking Algebra I in 9th grade, you know, they have that extra year, so that does play a piece. And I think just in general, and Dr. Kane, I bet you could probably speak better to this, I think sometimes in middle school in general, we kind of see a bit of a slide, and then, you know, we work to bring kids back up, because we know Algebra I is such a key course for success in all of those following math courses for kids to be successful.
So, you know, it's a trend across the country. Middle school is usually a year where the scores are not as high as in elementary school and high school. It could be developmental. However, in English Language Arts in Queen Anne's County, the last time we tested, we outperformed at the middle school level, not at math, but at the middle school English Language Arts. So it's, it's not uncommon, unfortunately, but most of the kids who are high performers at the middle school level are at, at least at 8th grade, are in the Algebra course.
Is there a reason there's no high school percentage for the English learners in your math class?
Yes, that student group was too small to report publicly.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. And so this next chart captures suspension rates. And so this is of the whole. So this is looking at last year for suspension, we wanted to have a complete year. This is only looking at students one time. So even if a student was suspended more than once, we only, we only counted them one time, because sometimes students do have multiple suspensions. This captures whether the student was kept on an in-school suspension or out of school, so either or, if it happened, it's recorded here. So if we look at our total student population, 2.14% of all students last year received at least one suspension. And so then if we look at the different student groups, what this tells us is of that student group, what percentage of students were suspended? And again, there's many, many ways that we internally look at this data, and we get into it in a lot more detail, because we can look at different student groups within student groups to really try to look at different ways and, you know, again, set goals, establish strategies around students and discipline.
Forbes, can I ask a question?
Of course.
So, okay, 2.4, 2.14%? Middle school, high school, Mr. Evans? The majority of that would be a middle and high school suspensions?
The majority, but there are suspensions at times in elementary.
So 2% out of 7,400 students? I mean, how does that compare to districts on the eastern shore?
It's, in fact, we've been one of the lowest in the state. I think Montgomery was, has been lower than us the past few years, but-
Who?
Montgomery County.
As large as they are?
Yes.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
And so again, when we kind of look at the data in this kind of way, you know, it helps us again establish those goals, because again, we want to start to narrow those gaps. And so we can see, again, different student groups, and again, also look at different ways, different strategies that we can support all of our students. And I think it's pretty profound, we do have that gap with more male students making up more of the suspensions, students with disabilities at 4.46%, students who receive free and reduced meals made up, again, and this is of their entire student group. And it's just to create a comparison point so that you can look at a group as a whole. It just gives you a point to compare. And if there's ever any other way you want this data presented to you, I'm always open to ideas, and I'm an email away, so, you know, don't hesitate. If you have ways that you're like, hey, I think the public, or I know that I can, you know, this is a more visually friendly way, you know, please feel free to share some thoughts. But for the sake of this, it's basically, again, just to create a comparison point. So if our overall suspension rate is 2.14%, as a system, maybe we want to set a goal that we would say we wanted to lower that. And then conversely, we would also want to look at all of our student groups and say, well, we also want to lower those rates as well. And maybe some of our student groups that have higher rates, we want to lower them a little bit more, because again, we're really trying to close those gaps. So it just gives us a comparison point when looking at our different student groups, and how many of that group have received at least one suspension? And that was in the 2019-20 year.
This dovetails on something that somebody brought to my attention, the Maryland Public School arrest data. In the last three years, we have had no 10 or less, and we're only county, county and the state, so we must be doing a good job with that by not having that happen in our schools, because when I look at neighboring counties and counties all across the thing, their numbers are, well, we're less than 10. And 10 has to, you know, 10 or below, you don't report. So we have reported zero for the last three years. It's heartwarming that we don't have those problems in our schools.
Yes.
That, you know, we don't have to have that action, because no other county can come close to us. I think Somerset has two years, but every other county has reported every year. So that's pretty, that's interesting.
And I know that our principals have good relationships with our SOs, so that partnership works well. And it's the understanding on both parties, you know, we enforce the rules, but if there's a safety concern, that's when we involve the SRO, so.
It does happen, it's just, it's nice to know that it's not gone to that level. And it's been, you know, and I think intervention is a lot to do with all of this kind of information. You know, you have a problem, it's our, you understand it, but it's good to intervene earlier if we know how we can fix the problem before it happens.
Absolutely, and I would say that's the goal of all school staff, is to, when we look at suspension data and all of those different pieces, is to think about, you know, what can we proactively do? Can we identify trends in the data? Like are incidents happening at certain times of day, in certain locations, certain times of year? You can start to really look more closely and think about ways we can proactively work together to try to prevent the issues before they happen. And absolutely, anytime, if it's a data set like that and we can't share it, that can be a good thing, because the numbers are so low for the rest data.
They share it through the state, it's just if it's 10 or below, it's too small a number, so you don't want to share it, which I understand that point, but it's just, it struck me very happily that we, after three years, we have none, zero, or not, we have less than 10, so we report zero, and nobody, nobody else is like us in the whole state.
I think it's also important to, as we start to look at strategies, when we look at the highest bar, which nobody has mentioned yet, with our black African American students at 7%, considering the population size for the district, the question should be, why is this? And what strategies can we put in place to change this data?
Are you going to address those things later on, or?
We're just presenting data at this point.
Okay, all right. Do you have any idea why that is? Since the superintendent raised the issue?
Well, that really is, is the point of the equity policy, is to make sure we are looking at this data internally, both in, and school-based, and then that's where the discussions start. Okay, so what, what possibly is the antecedent? What is happening in this particular subgroup? You know, we try and look for themes, and ultimately, you want to come up with an action plan and see what is it maybe this group needs or is not getting that would help to prevent? Because the whole point would be prevention, to help prevent, you know, the actual discipline infraction that would lead to a suspension.
And this is for, now, these are the only two slides, this one and the next one, that say 2019, 2020, so these are the current COVID year.
Yes, yes. And so the suspension data really from that, we wanted to give recent data, but really, you know, once we hit that March date. And, but for the chronic absenteeism, so the way we calculated chronic, so chronic absenteeism is considered a student, it's a student is counted as being chronically absent if they miss 10% or more of the school year. Because of the unusual year last year, it was actually looked at as 10% of the total school days through March 13th, which was that final day, when students were no longer in the building. So this, this next slide captures that, the suspension one captured the entire year, but this captures because chronic absenteeism is calculated federally as 10%. So if a student misses 10% or more of the school year, they're considered chronically absent.
Give me the dates again for that, from 2019, 2020? What months are you, where are you taking it from?
Yeah, so for 2019, 2020, so the suspension data captures all year, like the suspensions, that's how we were required to report to the state.
Right, so what month and year, to what month?
August, with the first day of school through the last day of school in June was for suspension data.
Of 2020, okay.
Yep, and then chronic absenteeism, the way we were directed by the Maryland State Department of Ed to report chronic absenteeism last year was based on attendance through March 13th. And the reason why was that school systems were calculating attendance in different ways due to the circumstance. It's, there's been just a lot of guidance since then, so they just wanted to make sure that when they were looking at school systems, they were comparing that same set of time for chronic absenteeism, so that they weren't counting 10% of the entire year, they wanted to look at it in terms of 10% of the days kids, students were physically present until that closure. Normally-
Okay, so that's going from August until March 13th?
That's correct. And normally, it's, you know, first day of school through the last day of school, and if a student's been absent 10%, which would be 18 days, so 18 out of 180, then they're considered chronically absent.
And that's irregardless of having documentation?
That's correct, thank you.
Because I've been on this list. When my daughter had surgeries, we were, we were notified.
Yep.
She was allowed to make up work, whereas somebody who's undocumented should not be making up work.
Yeah, this is any absence, so documented for an illness purpose or not.
Now, that seems like it could be a little misleading, because chronic absenteeism, you just kind of, I get a sense of-
Yeah, this is the federal definition of it. And we're required to report it as such, so, yeah, and again, regardless of the circumstance.
Have we gone further and identified which ones were, what percentage were surgery or-
Documented, documented.
Yeah, we actually have, our schools do a great job of really working with their students and reaching out if they're noticing students with attendance challenges, and they're very aware of who is out due to, you know, an illness or some unusual circumstance going on versus a student that, you know, maybe isn't there for other reasons. And we have some tools that we have within our student information system to track that data every day.
So could I make a recommendation, because again, bar graphs are not my forte? If we just said, the number of suspensions this school year was, and I did the calculation, 158 suspensions, and of that 158, you know, 12 of them were, you know, Hispanic, 10 were two or more, you know, that way we can see the actual numbers rather than this bar graph, because it's kind of misleading to me that, because these numbers don't even equal up to 100% of the amount. So to me, that's why, I think that's why I'm having trouble with it.
And the reason we're often held accountable to of the whole is for accountability purposes.
Okay.
Because we are accountable to ensure we don't have disproportionality between student groups, and in-school districts can be identified for that, you know, if there's disproportionality. So oftentimes, sometimes, if we take of the whole, what you're not seeing is, but what percentage of the population is that student group? So is there disproportionality there? So typically, it's of that student group, what is the percentage that falls in this category? So we can see, you know, if there's a student group who's much higher or much lower, it kind of teases it out a little bit for those accountability purposes, to make sure that, because again, and then when we set those goals, it helps us really kind of narrow into, you know, a course for suspension, bringing those numbers down, and for proficiency, bringing those numbers up. Thank you.
Do we keep, do we keep track of the reason for the suspension?
Yes, yep. We, we look at, when we look at our suspension data, we look down to the discipline infraction code, am I using the terminology that we track? So we can actually look at it in a much more detailed way, and our schools can do that as well. So again, when we're talking about, you know, proactively trying to strategize to support our different groups, when we see that kind of, those disproportional amounts between two groups, that helps us look a little bit closer.
Could you prepare something like that for us to take a look at?
So it depends on the size of the student group to share it publicly.
Kind of like what you just said, you couldn't share a couple of them?
Oh, in terms of, I'm sorry, yeah, I could have, Mr. Evans, he usually reports that, I think, don't you?
So we, I know it's more difficult out of power school, but each school has called SWISS, a school-wide information system, where it's very easy to get the, to filter by the infraction. So yes, we could get that.
Yeah, we could provide that, yes, I'm sorry. I was thinking more student groups, I wasn't thinking the...
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
And what's throwing a snowball? What is that? Because I got suspended for that.
Or...
A long time ago, throwing a snowball in the parking lot.
So did you hit the person?
It was too long ago. I reckon I did.
Plea to him.
There you go.
Yeah, but we certainly can, and Mr. Evans, I'm going to support you with that.
It was 1981, Ms. Bass.
And again, just to jump to that last chart, so again, when we look at all students, 15.5% of our students last year were considered chronically absent, which meant they missed 10% or more of the school year. Of our African-American students, 21.44% were chronically absent, 17.36% of our Hispanic-Latino students, 18.75 of our students who are two or more races, 14.65% of our white students, 17.34% of our English learners, 25.43% of our students who qualify for free or reduced meals were considered chronically absent, 21.71% of our students with disabilities. And then this is one of the charts where it's a little more closer between our female and male students, that females were a little bit higher at 15.92% and male students at 15.09. But again, you know, when we look at, we want to bring all of these down, and the groups that are much higher, we want to bring them down even further. So when we set goals, you know, we want to set a goal for the whole student population, but our groups who are much higher, we want to set an even bigger goal. Because again, we want to start narrowing those gaps, because we know how important it is for our students to be in our buildings.
I think, though, that for me to get a better picture of what's excused and what's not, as if, since you're going to go ahead and put something together for types of suspensions, if we could also get a breakdown of how many were, what percentage were excused and what were not excused.
You mean absences?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
But just to be clear, for the federal definition, it doesn't matter if it's excused or not, it's an absence.
And what actually goes down on the student record card is days enrolled, days absent, days attended. So it doesn't designate.
Well, but I think you keep track, don't you? Because don't you then send...
I get a report and it gives me all the codes that have been entered for each of my children on days that they've missed this class or a whole day, or, and then when I send the note in, I'll see it on the next report that that code may have changed because of when the report came out.
And we, and we do use those codes, and certainly at the elementary level, because if there's a student that's true and unlawfully, we have to address that. And that's why really we do them by unlawful, lawful absence. And lawful absence certainly could be medical or other reasons. But ultimately, what's, what's on the permanent student record is days enrolled, days attended, days absent.
Yeah, no, I totally understand that, yes.
What would concern me greatly is absenteeism, once a child gets behind, and you know, you're talking class of 18 to 25, and it's chronic, then you never get caught up. I mean, it's, you know, because a class is moving like this and they're not up with it, up to par, I can just think it can snowball to the point where there's where you have some real issues. So I think attendance is a, probably a major issue through all our system, you know? And if, even if it's unexcused or accused, a way to, if they are not there, to get them caught up quickly, because, you know, in a lot of classes, if you, if you miss the first quarter, you might be, you finished.
Absolutely. And that's really why we use this chronic absentee rate metric, because even if it is excused and lawful, it's an issue when you're missing instruction. So, and certainly our PPW is out of my office, at every school, they have a student support team that meets regularly, and that's one of the major issues that is looked at data-wise, is, you know, who are our students who are missing instruction, both lawfully and unlawfully? Because even if they are out, you know, parents are writing notes or there are issues, we want to intervene in some way so that they're getting what they need. And in some cases, it might be put on home hospital instruction, where we're sending someone to the house and they're actually counted as present then.
It might be interesting to see how these numbers turn out with the adoption of the counter for next year, given they're getting more time around certain holidays, if these numbers drop.
It would certainly be very interesting to look at the days that we have the highest levels of absenteeism as well, and look at those trends. And then, like you said, have that comparison point for next year to see if it makes a difference. Because I think we all probably are in agreement that if we can impact chronic absenteeism, you're going to see positive effects across the board. Because if you have students come to class more, when they're able to, of course, then you're going to see that kind of positively impact in other areas to proficiency, you know, just to name one of them, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
I'll take care.
Our next will be the school resource unit is...
Shut this one on.
Hello. How you doing, Gary?
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, board.
Good evening. Dr. Kane. How are you?
Good, how are you all doing? First, I wanted to say just thank you to the board and thank you to Dr. Kane. We've had some challenging years as far as, you know, being able to get into the schools with certain programs, but we've had a great partnership in the past, pre-COVID, active assailant training that we've done in the schools, Stop the Bleed. And Dr. Kane got us into the schools with a lot of the age-appropriate-based programs that we were able to teach, all the way from kindergarten all the way through to our seniors. And I really appreciate the partnership that our office shares with the board as well as Dr. Kane. It really, it really means a lot and goes a long way. There's been a lot going on in Annapolis, I think we all know that, with the bills that have gone back and forth. We've been monitoring all the bills, seems like several of them have not made it very far, which is good. And obviously, we're still watching, you know, House Bill 522 to kind of see where that goes. But just want to let you know that we do have our pulse on that, and it does also preclude into the facts that I really appreciate you supporting the school resource officers. I think they're vital to our community, I think they're vital to our schools. And the school resource officer is much more than just brick and mortar security. They're a friend, a coach, they're a partner, they're somebody who helps that student get through something, and they're a familiar face and they're comforting in all the things that we see nowadays with our news media and things like that. So I'd like to introduce to all of you Lieutenant Mark Meal, he heads up the resource unit. And we're going to kind of go over the presentation with you. Slide number two. So believe it or not, this is the school resource officers in the unit. Quite a contingency of personnel, but we do have quite a network of schools within the county. So Lieutenant Meal, First Sergeant John Myers, Jeremy Davidson, Sergeant Corporal Ryan Davidson, DFC Alex Cooper, who is our new DARE instructor, DFC George Parker, DFC Patrick Madison, DFC Savannah Dickey Faggert, DFC Joseph Patakowski, and DFC Austin Patchett is your school resource officer team. I didn't want to bring them all in, because somebody would probably say we had too many people in the room, or we didn't have the masks on, so, but I wanted to introduce to you that staff, because they do a great job. It takes a very dedicated person, a person who is very familiar with working with youth to be in that position in the schools. And it's a very trusted position, and we do see that in the work that they do. I'm going to let Lieutenant Mark Meal talk to you about the purpose of the school resource officer in the unit.
Good evening, I'm Lieutenant Mark Meal of the Sheriff's Department. I am the Support Services Division Commander. One of the units that I oversee is the Sheriff's Resource Unit, which is the school resource unit, the offices who are assigned to the school for security. Thank you, Dr. Kane, for allowing us to be here tonight, and the board as well. Thank you all very much. The Sheriff's Resource Unit is a multifaceted unit that works in partnership with the Board of Education, along with other partners within the county. We are a goodwill ambassador, if you will, unit, a liaison for the community, Board of Education, students, faculty, and staff. As you can see from the list on this slide, there are many duties, not all-encompassing, but it gives you a good idea of what they do every day. We have MOUs with each entity, we have an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding with the Board of Education, that covers our operational capabilities within the schools. We're in constant communication with the board and staff at each school on daily operations. We also have MOUs with other entities, other departments, law enforcement agencies as well, to help assist with school coverage throughout the county. We have CPD, Central Police Department also assists, and I'll talk about that later on in reference to the DARE program. They're also on board with that as well. Our main objective in the schools is school safety, obviously. Safety for the students, number one priority, safety of the faculty and staff of each facility, and also at the Board of Education. Any place the school is responsible for, that's our main objective. We're there to promote respect for everyone on premises and in the facility. We're there as a physical deterrent from any nefarious activity that may, a person that may try to come in there and do harm. That's our main objectives. So the number one question is, they see the school resource officer out there, and they may see him interact with the students, but the real question is, is kind of, what does the school resource officer do in and around the schools in the course of an eight-hour or longer day? They do do traffic control, they assist when they can with letting buses in and out, and helping students get in and out of different schools. Their communication with the school administration, the parents, and also the students in the schools. They also patrol the exterior of the building, they walk around the campus of the schools, they move, move around to look for things that might be suspicious, people ordering different things that might be, things that we should be alerted to. But they also walk the interior of the schools, they make sure that the exterior doors are locked, walk through the hallways via presence during lunches and classes, and also they are friends to the students that are inside that facility, as well as the staff and the parents and visitors. They do actually have the task also of the prevention of illicit substances, partnerships with the Board of Education, checks to the vehicles, lockers, or other areas as directed by the school staff would be done by the school resource officer in the school. Now, as far as the, the operational responsibilities of the resource unit deputies on location, obviously, one of the primary objectives, too, is to investigate crimes on, on school premises. We work jointly with the Board of Education and all the school staff on investigations as best as possible. Our job is not disciplinary in nature of the students, that's the school's function. Our job is to enforce any criminal violations or civil infractions that are related to those types of issues. Another main objective of the resource unit is to limit interruptions within the school day. Obviously, we need to have a cohesive environment at the school for students to learn to the best of their ability, so we're there to assist in keeping a harmonious school day occurring every day. We are there also to assist with any type of emergency evaluation issue that may arise with a student or staff. If there's needs that we can assist with, we will. We have a great working relationship with the Board of Education that we appreciate. We're there also to assist with threat assessments, if there are any involved, which leads me into the next slide for home visits. If you're not aware, the nationwide best practice is for law enforcement these days, because of all the active assailant attacks we've had over the, over the years in various states, the Maryland Center for School Safety has adopted this best practice, which is called home visits. And what that is basically is, if we get information, especially after hours, where we get information that cannot wait until the next morning, where we have to act on it immediately, and I'm talking in regards to safety of students, students at the school or the facility and staff itself, and weapons to anything related to weapons or any type of violence that we need to address immediately, we will investigate that, we'll have our SROs come out in the evening or on weekends if we have to. And they will conduct the investigation and perform home visits with the family and discuss that with the parents of the child, and also locate the child to investigate further. And we will be in communication with the Board of Education staff as well on those types of investigations.
A lot of times, I want to see on the home visits, they're able to de-escalate something. It may be just a conflict that occurred on a school bus or something that occurred on social media, and a lot of times, the parents are unaware, the deputies actually go out and do the home visits, are able to mitigate that situation, to try to prevent that from coming into the school system the next day, or on the bus the next day, or getting it hopefully taken off social media or something like that. You know, if it's something that's done with somebody who's bullying or picking on somebody or making a threat like that. So it's important that we, we still continue with the home visits. I can tell you that many, many times, they'll send me an email or give me a call that they're en route to do a home visit at 9:30, 10 o'clock at night. But it's important for the safety of the staff, students, and school to make sure that we do those. So the big question is, is why do we do what we do? One, for the safety of the staff, the safety of the kids, the safety of the visitors that go to the school, reduce and eliminate all the threats that could bring harm to them, and create a safe environment to learn. I always say that because someone knew, and somebody out there sees something, but they didn't say something, we want the community to understand that it's important to act now, and let us know if you see something, communicate through the Board of Ed, communicate through the school resource officer, through our tips line or something else. Our goal is to keep everyone within the school system safe, that is the best thing that we can do, so. We have a new component to our school resource officers, and that's the DARE program.
The DARE program is something that is kind of an older idea, but it's been revamped and reevaluated to be much more of an educational and prevention program for students in regards to drug abuse resistance and education. It is a grant-funded program through, well, it's part of the duties that I applied for a grant through, at the permission from the sheriff, for the Maryland Center for School Safety. They provide funds for salary for this position through the grants. It pays approximately about 90% of the deputy's salary, and Deputy DFC Alex Cooper is our current DARE, DARE officer. This program, as I stated, is for education and prevention. It requires our agency or any agency applying for this grant to have an MOU with the Board of Education, and also in conjunction with the local police departments, because that money can be shared, through the grant, can be shared with other departments to provide for this type of program and for school coverage in the county. And Central Police Department joined in this program with us and the Board of Education. This, this program gives children the tools necessary to learn about drugs, the dangers of drugs, the dangers of gangs, and violence.
And as you can see, the curriculum goes from the elementary school level all the way up to the high school level. And we're injecting this in slowly, since this is our first year with the program, to get it into all the different school levels as quickly as possible the next year or two, so.
If I may interject, Sheriff, this, this program is an age-appropriate curriculum for each level of education, middle, middle school, elementary, and high school. So it's a very, very beneficial program, and we've already had talks with the Board of Education to get on the curriculum for this year and the elementary schools, and then progress the next year into the middle schools and so forth from there. So we appreciate the cooperation, the Board of Education.
I think most of the parents out there, or people that are watching, probably remember the original DARE program that we all went through and, and how much of an impact that made. Obviously, a lot's changed since then, and new teaching skills and new things have happened that we need to bring forward. So this is a new, completely different DARE program, it's been completely revamped, age-appropriate, and I'm really excited to see this. We've tried for many years to get funding for this, we were finally able to do it, and I'm really excited about getting this into the program for the upcoming school years, so. Excellent.
Well, thank you. I do want to say, we certainly, the leadership here, we certainly appreciate the responsiveness. I mean, sometimes, and yes, there are home visits that are late, 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 or early, 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 and you all are always right on time, right there to support schools, and we greatly appreciate it. We are grateful for our SROs.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I personally want to thank you guys for what you do for the school, and what you do for Queen Anne's County.
Thanks.
We appreciate that, and I know the community does. A couple of questions.
Sure.
We're just back in school now, after a year being out. Have you worked with our staff to get an overall view and make sure we're right where we're supposed to be as far as security? And I know you can't say individual things, but just that we're up to date and maybe sure we're working hand in hand, because, you know, we've been out for a year, not that we've let our guard down, but things change, and now we're back in school, we're full-time, I just...
Yeah, as we normally would with any deficiencies, if we do see those, we'll address that with the school principal and then with the board as well, if we do see any deficiencies that are out there.
You feel comfortable where we are back in school and where we're...
I think we're all getting, yeah, I think we're all getting back to, to what a normal work environment or normal learning environment should be. So I think everything takes some tweaking, it takes some tweaking in my office to remind people to wear their mask when they're walking down the hallway, but, you know, I think that, I think we're going to get there, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we're having summer school this summer. I guess you're aware of that.
We are.
So you'll be.
Yep, in and around the schools and providing the same level of protection for this.
And any other board have any questions?
Well, I just have a question about K-9 Officer Tiger. What is his main purpose as an SRO?
He is a warm, fluffy furball, very kid-friendly. He's something that we can take to a community event and then something that we can also use to scan cars and eliminate narcotics out of our community and out of our school parking lots and things like that. So he's, if you meet him on the street, he's just the biggest, fluffiest cuddle dog that he is, but when he knows, he knows when to get ready for work, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but he's a great tool to have in the resource unit. And the reason why we did put him in the resource unit was I would feel very comfortable with him coming in and out of our schools, anything that we need him for, parking lots, things like that.
Could you probably say he's probably the favorite officer? No, I'm just teasing.
Yeah, I would never, I'd have all the K-9 animals mad at me then, so no. All the dogs play an important role in what we do, yeah, absolutely.
Sheriff Hoffman, just thank you so much. Just to give a little history, some people may here may not realize, but back in the years past, when there wasn't enough money for school resource officers, you and your staff found it in your budget, made it happen. We've never been without your guidance all these years, and just from the heart, I have to say thank you so much for, from the community and the schools, everything. Despite what happens with this HB 522, we know that you've got Queen Anne's County. We've got her back.
Unless you guys make me, my goal is to always keep the school resource officers in the schools. You know, we'll find, we'll find a way, but, you know, my children have attended Queen Anne's County public schools. My daughter's going to attend the schools here in this county, and I think it's a great, safe place, and thanks to leadership and the board and everybody, it's, you know, and partnerships with law enforcement, we've been able to do that. The funding does come out of my existing budget, but we always find a way. I tell these guys, they know. Make sure that darn school's covered, because, you know, and it is. And I've got a great partnership with my staff on that as well, because it's, they're our kids, they're our teachers, you know, they're our community members as well, so. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
This board is elected by the people, and I think that everybody wants to see you all where you are, helping us out, and you're doing a great job.
Thanks.
And no matter what happens in Annapolis, we plan to have you in our schools.
We're different than Annapolis. We are.
Well, I'm saying, when I say Annapolis, I'm using legislation. If they come up with any different laws. And if you would, I'd love to see if you could put some time in in September, maybe, to come back and see us and update us. I think it's good for the community to see us working together, the partnership we have, and the public needs to know we're all in this together.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'd like to give you a shout out for, my son is very fond of Officer Parker. He came out of Southerville Middle School. He's into high school this year, so he hasn't had a chance to meet his new officer, but he's excited to.
Yeah.
And I've had a chance to work with Lieutenant Meele and several other sheriffs from our vaccination clinics and our test sites. Your staff is wonderful to work with.
Thank you.
And just like every other agency in this county, pulling more load than just your regular job.
I think right now it takes all of us to pull a bunch of strings to get it all done.
Yeah.
That's what we're here for, so. Thank you for your time.
We're missing Officer Sewell, too. We're missing him.
Yeah, you know, George Sewell's the one guy that I've got the picture almost with the arm around the kid walking down the hallway of the high school. It's a very touching, touching thing to see, you know, the compassion that the men and women have that are in the schools, so.
We're grateful for all of them, so thank you both.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Thank you, board. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank your staff when you get back there.
I will probably thank you.
Sheriff, this is for Officer Tiger. Maybe he'll share.
People share. Thank you so much. That is awesome. I'll make sure he gets this. Appreciate that. Have a good evening. See you all.
You, too.
Okay, moving on, we're to the 6-03, Poverty Impact on Child's Brain.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you very much. We have three of our fabulous leaders coming to talk with us today about trauma of poverty impact on child's brain. We have with us Mrs. Enzer, who is our Title I liaison and jack-of-all-trades and presenter for many. We have Mrs. Michelle McNeil, who does our Title I and migrant families and early learning programs, and of course, Mrs. Passan, who is in charge of all of our, starting at, what, grade five or?
Three.
Three, grade three and above, English Language Arts. So thank you, ladies, for being here.
Thank you for having us. Good presentation. Okay. Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Kane, members of the board and the executive team. Happy spring. Dr. Kane just gave us such a wonderful introduction, but again, so that the audience at home watching knows who's who, my name is Bridgette Passan. I'm the English Language Arts Supervisor for grades three through 12.
And my name is Amanda Enzer. I am the Title I Family and Community Engagement Specialist.
And I'm Michelle McNeil, Supervisor of Early Learning, Title I, Title III, and Migrant Education.
So we're here to talk to you tonight about a particular group of students, and that's our students who live in poverty. We're going to talk about the impacts that living in poverty can have on learning because of the trauma that's caused, and we're also going to talk about the importance of equity in helping our students heal. Now, as you can tell, providing equitable resources is a team effort. So each of us are bringing things from our respective roles to this presentation tonight to share with you and deepen your understanding and our work towards equity with particular regard to students from poverty. Ms. Enzer is going to discuss poverty and pandemic poverty. Ms. McNeil will talk about the cognitive gaps, the Ready to Read Act, and the science of reading, and I will bookend our work tonight with a quick reference to educational equity in COMAR, and then close this out by talking about the power of choice. Okay, so as we are all becoming quite familiar with, educational equity means that every student has access to the opportunities, resources, and educational rigor they need throughout their educational career to maximize their academic success, their social and emotional well-being, and to view each student's individual characteristics as valuable. Now, those bolded words are my annotations. Those are the words that really stand out to me in the work that I do for the ELA program and improving it, but I thought it was important to note that in COMAR, they further drill down on the individual characteristics. And here's just a list of 11 characteristics that can make up one student. Tonight, we're going to talk about A and K. We're going to talk about student ability, and we're going to talk about student ability in relation to socioeconomic status with particular regard to students from poverty. Okay, so data story is always important. I know you just had a lot of data about two presentations ago, and this color-coded chart helps lay out the data trends for the last two years that we were tested in ELA and Algebra. Now, I know that this writing is very tiny, so I'll kind of give some highlights for the audience. So with particular regard, so it has the state rank and then our rank on the eastern shore for the years 2017 and 2018, and 2018 and 2019. Overall, Queen Anne's County Public Schools comes in the top third of the state, so there are 24 counties in the state. Over these past two years that are on this slide, we have placed in the top third. And on the shore, in 27 and 2018, we placed in the top three, and 2018 and 2019, we were one or two on the shore in all tested areas. So our data looks really great overall, whole picture. But we've been talking about achievement gaps, opportunity gaps, a lot tonight, so we know that we're working on closing those gaps, narrowing those gaps for particular student groups, namely our African-American students, our FARM students, our special education, and our EL student groups. Let's drill down a little bit, and I'm actually going to go to my second slide. So let's drill down on ELA 8 data. So ELA 8, that's English Language Arts eighth grade, scored the top in the state for two consecutive years. This is data from 2018, 2019 that you can find on Maryland Report Card. So 67.6% of our eighth graders in 1819 scored proficient, and that means they received a score of four or five. Five is the highest you could receive on PARC. It means you're exceeding expectations. Four means you're meeting expectations. The data included below is also disaggregated by gender, so the two special services on here are FARM students, those are free and reduced meals, and that is how we identify our students in poverty, and our special education students. And it also included male and female data. So overall, male and female data, there is a gender gap there, which I'll address in my next presentation, but of about 24 percentage points. If you look at the FARM's data, males, 30% of our FARM's males scored at a four or five. It means they passed the state test. That means approximately 70% did not. Those 70% received a score of three, two, or one. So the score overall is on a scale of five. For special education, you can see the male and female further disaggregated data. 7% of our males in special ed received a four or a five, which means 93% did not score as proficient. So let me paint a picture with a scenario, if you will, and let's, for argument's sake, take two boys. Let's take a boy from the FARM's category who scored a one, the lowest possible score, and he is in my classroom. That FARM's boy who scored a one is reading two grade levels below. He is part of that data related to chronic absenteeism. And then let's take a special education male who's also in the same class, and let's give him a three. He is approaching proficiency. He is almost on grade level, meeting standards on grade level. He is working really hard in an intervention that he takes. He is almost reading on grade level. He comes to school all the time, and he works really hard. Now, those two boys, in addition to 23 or 24 other students, are all in my class, but just think about those two boys. When I'm teaching a short story and we are analyzing a piece of text, do both of those boys need the same level of support from me in helping them meet the standard? And I just realized I asked that rhetorical and I didn't mean it to sound that way, but I think we all can agree that the answer is no. They need different things. I've got one student who has already missed, let's say, 10, 12 days of school, and I have another student who just needs a little more of a push before he's proficient. So what do I do? And Dr. Kane, stop me if I get too far in the weeds, if I'm giving out too much educational language.
I love the story.
Members of the board, please question anything I say. So, okay, so what do I do with these two boards, these two boys? So I may start with a whole group example for all 24 of them, and I may walk them through it and do what's called a think-along, so they can see how I approach the text, how I might write two or three sentences about it, how I might highlight or circle certain words, and then I might release them a little bit and let them work in pairs. And while they're working in pairs, I'm walking around to check how everybody's doing, but I've looked at my data and I know who needs what, and I'm really leaning into, literally and physically, pre-COVID, of course, to check out their answers and to see how they're doing and to see, okay, well, what's next? Who's ready to work in a small group and who needs to come work with Ms. Passan? So in looking at that, it's called a lead, I know that this FARM's boy, he needs to get pulled into a group of three or four students with me. He needs another example. He needs the text checked even more before I can release him to work on his own. But my special education student, who is, who has almost mastered the standard, just needs an extra nudge, so to speak. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to send him into a group with maybe one or two peers. And all my teachers know when you send kids into a group, everybody needs a role, you know, what's their role in the group so that they're accountable, and I'm probably going to make that special education male my reporter. So when they're done with their group work and I'm done with my small group, when I get to his group, I'm going to ask him to report what they did, and I'm going to be able to formatively assess in what he speaks or if he shows his answer or his organizer, where he is with that. And that will give me final data for the day to move forward with those boys. So that's equity. That's giving students what they need. That's looking at their data story, and it's also thinking about them personally, because before you know how to greet them, you also need to have relationships with them to see what's going to work for them. So I hope in kind of grounding us in the language of COMAR and a data story that that helps a little bit.
So the essential question for us tonight is why should education care about poverty, right? What is poverty and why does it matter in schools? And so to begin, studies show that poverty is the single most significant issue impacting public education today. So besides the families that are living in poverty, education is the institution that is most distressed by poverty. We know that poverty has changed significantly over the past 30 years, and recent neuroscience shows us that it is actually transforming the brain at the very genetic level, and so brain science becomes a big piece of this presentation tonight. But before we speak any further about poverty's impact, I want to take a few minutes to define socioeconomic status and poverty. Socioeconomic status is generally referred to as the social standing or class of an individual or group, and it is often measured by a combination of education, income, and occupation, and that's sort of a general consensus of socioeconomic status. Poverty has many definitions, but when we look at poverty in education, we are looking at the definition of the extent to which an individual does without resources. It's not about a lack of intelligence. It's not about a lack of ability, but it's about a lack of resources. It's about not knowing what the options and choices are. It's about not knowing the hidden rules of the middle class, which is what schools operate on, and when we talk about hidden rules, we're talking about those unspoken understandings that send a cue to a group of people that either they fit in or they don't fit in. And we are also talking about not knowing how to use resources to improve their lives. So this is ultimately where we see the greatest impact. We know that resources matter. We know that it's all about the early extras. When we talk about early extras, we think about babies, birth through five, being spoken to, read to, simply loved, touched, cared for, children who get enough sleep as one of those early extras. When we talk about late extras, we focus on those extracurricular things, learning to play an instrument, having the chance to play a travel sport, just all those extra things that many of our students do not get outside of their school hours. So before moving further, I want to look a little bit at poverty by the numbers. Studies show that a 60%, there's a 60% increase in high-poverty schools since the year 2000. In fact, according to a study done by the U.S. Department of Education in 2017, one in four schools in this country have been classified as high-poverty schools. So we know that this is an issue, as I said, that is impacting education. As Ms. Passan mentioned previously, poverty is measured in public education by the number of students who receive free or reduced-priced lunches or meals. And in Queen Anne's County Public Schools, that's roughly 20% of our students who live within that poverty threshold, so approximately one in four students are considered to be FARMs. I want to take a few minutes to tell you why FARM's data can be a bit misleading, and we really need to consider it this year as well. Our numbers are lower than what they say on paper, because as we know during the pandemic time, all students have had access to free meals. So the current FARM's data is not an accurate picture of the vulnerable population of Queen Anne's County. In addition, if we're sort of considering that normal school year, FARM's numbers are also very misleading and not always accurate, and reasons for that being is that the FARM's forms are very complicated to complete. There is, sometimes we face an issue, especially with our immigrant parents, there's a fear for filling out the forms, there's pride issues with filling out these forms, that all contribute to the lower numbers. And then ultimately, some families have just enough income to surpass the poverty threshold, but when we look at the reality of it, they still can't afford to buy lunch. So all of those factors we need to consider when we're looking at FARM's numbers, because it doesn't give the real picture of our students impacted by poverty. We know poverty is mostly rural, but not exclusively. And I, as mentioned before, I am the Title I Family Engagement Specialist, and so really I am tied to Title I schools, our four Title I schools. Most of my work is done at Graysonville Elementary, Churchill, Southersville Elementary, and Southersville Middle School. Those are our labeled Title I schools in Queen Anne's County. But I find it very important to remind all of us that there are pockets of poverty at all 14 schools across the district, and we've seen those pockets grow, especially during this pandemic time. So as mentioned, I want to So as mentioned, I want to specifically address the impact of pandemic poverty. And Columbia University researchers have tracked poverty rates in the United States just before and throughout the coronavirus pandemic. And the number of Americans living in poverty grew by eight million since May of 2020. We know that the increases in poverty rates have been particularly acute for Black and Hispanic people as well as children. And we have seen these numbers grow here in Queen Anne's County. I like to tell the stories. I spent a lot of time in the spring working on food distribution across the county, trying to find those pockets, those areas locating, to provide food access to our families. And I had a teacher at Mata Peak Elementary say to me, "I've never seen so many people come pick up meals before." And it really reminded me, you know, I work mostly in the northern end of the county where our numbers were large, but there wasn't a significant increase. But when you started to look at those distribution numbers in the southern part of the county or on the island, people were really shocked by the number of families who were coming regularly to pick up food. So in our own community, we have seen a significant increase in food insecurity. And as teachers, we know that it is very hard to teach or inspire children who are hungry. We have seen a huge increase, especially in the northern end with residential instability. Those who are facing poverty are twice as likely to have moved in the past year and three times as likely to rent. We're seeing a very transient community, families jumping back and forth across county lines, school to school, anywhere where they can find a place they can afford. And then I want to talk just a minute about access. And throughout the pandemic and actually at all times, we've discussed in great detail the inequities related to digital access, right? The Wi-Fi, the devices, those kinds of things. But I want to remind everyone that schools are essentially lifelines. And so this means that our families have continued to struggle with access to medical needs, good nutrition. And for our children of poverty, they've really struggled to have access to their support systems because that's ultimately what schools are for many of these families. So I really wanted to just focus and give you a little bit extra detail on pandemic poverty. So now that we have talked about defining poverty and what that looks like by the numbers in our community, I want to talk about the impact and the major barriers on school success. So we break these into four categories. But before we get into those four categories, we know that 40% of children in poverty are not prepared for primary school. We know that children in poverty are 1.3 times more likely to have a developmental or learning disability. And we know that by fourth grade, they're two years behind grade level. And by 12th grade, they are often four years behind. We also know that child development is nearly a two-to-one advantage of environment over genetics. So in a genetics account for 34% of influence and environment is 66%. In fact, a study done at the Children's Hospital in Philadelphia showed that spending your first five years in poverty was more influential than gestational exposure to cocaine. So in other words, that means you are better off to be born addicted to crack than you are to spend your first five years in poverty. Poverty shrinks parts of the brain, essential for memory, planning, and decision-making. And we know that brain development is severely impacted without resources. And so this also connects us to the impact of chronic stress and emotional control. Chronic stress defined as high-stress sustained over long periods of time. And it's known to actually show physical changes in the brain surface. In fact, when they do research on the prefrontal cortex of children who have suffered from chronic stress, they are seeing that it resembles the brains of adults who have had strokes. So it's the same type of effects on the prefrontal cortex where all of your executive functioning takes place as those adults who have had strokes. Children generally become highly reactive, right? That real hyper vigilant stage, that nervous stress. Or underreactive and they really start to show this learned helplessness. And they show a lack of impulse control. And a lot of times, what we're seeing in schools are behaviors that mimic or symptoms that mimic ADHD. And it really is because of their environmental background. And then finally, we know that it has a great impact on language nutrition and cognitive gaps. Growing up in poverty impacts language nutrition and creates these gigantic cognitive gaps. Children start school with a lack of vocabulary. They have difficulty following instructions and expressing feelings. And they struggle with the foundations for school readiness. And ultimately, we know that that truly impacts the essential skill of learning to read.
As Ms. Enzer mentioned, the impact of poverty on learning, I'm going to specifically focus on the impact of learning to read. As you can see, our many students, low-income families, are at higher risk of entering school with poor language skills. We're going to talk about three factors that relate to that. The first one is children of poverty are not exposed to language. They're not exposed to adult reactions, language and speech, and they're not having those interactions with other people. There's less exposure to the language, which can affect the development of oral language. And by the time the child enters the classroom, there's a significant difference in how the child is able to understand what is being taught to them and how to respond to others. The second factor is going to go a little bit as to what Ms. Enzer was saying, that poverty changes the way the brain develops. So you definitely see differences in the frontal lobe that can affect the cognitive and self-control. That's where paying attention, listening, and learning on demand. The difference in the occipital lobe, the back of the head, can affect the spatial skills for students. And then the working memory can impact the ability for them to listen and to remember what has been read and taught to them and organize those thoughts so they can walk away with an understanding. The last factor that we're going to focus on is the high levels of stress for children living in poverty. Our neural pathways responding to stress such as fear and anxiety may begin to overdevelop, leaving our other pathways, such as reasoning, planning, and learning, to develop more slowly. So how are we identifying our students that are having these reading difficulties when they start school? So the Ready to Read Act, which I've shared in the beginning of the year as well, started in 2021 school year, Senate Bill 734, which enabled all Maryland school districts to provide a reading screening to all kindergarten students to help determine if they are at risk for reading difficulties. And based off of the data, those students identified at risk received supplemental instruction to help support them in their reading difficulties. So let's take a look at that data. Our screening instrument we used this year was Using the Exact Path. In September of 2020, our data showed that 44% of our kindergarten students were demonstrating reading difficulties. 35% were approaching on level and 21% on level or above. The screening focused on letter identification, letter sounds, syllables, rhyming, and blending sounds. In March of 2021, we did a mid-year and we'll do a post at the end of the year as well. But we had a decrease of students with reading difficulties. We were at 11%, 15% of approaching on level, and 73% on level or above. So what are we doing in Queen Anne's County to support those students with reading difficulties? Well, we continue to use small group instruction. Foundations is a Tier One and Tier Two intervention that we use in whole group and small group and continue with explicit instruction. We incorporate our foundational standards in our lesson. And we're becoming knowledgeable in the science of reading to understand the process of becoming a reader. And we have many professional development opportunities recommended by MSDE to enhance our knowledge on the systematic approach to support students. Those being the letters training and the REL Professional Learning Community on emergent literacy modules. So what is science of reading? Well, science of reading really talks about how reading works in the brain, what to teach, how to teach, and structures to implement. This is something that MSDE has presented in order for us to understand how our students are learning to read, what stages they need to go through in order to fully comprehend and read the text. So here's a little diagram that we have. So if you take a look at the blue box, decoding and word recognition, this is the first stage that we need to look at. It's really the stage that's in red on the brain. It's your phonemic awareness and phonics. We're looking at word pronunciation, letter recognition, connection of phonemes to letters, and word recognition. Once we've achieved that goal, we move on to oral language comprehension, which is really your vocabulary, the background knowledge, and your listening comprehension. When you take those two together, that equals your reading comprehension, the ability for our students to understand meaning of text and to be able to read it with fluency. So as I mentioned in the previous slide, professional development recommended by MSDE. There are two opportunities that we're taking advantage of and with our staff. One of them is a Professional Learning Community suite on materials that work on four modules, print knowledge, phonological awareness, vocabulary, and oral language. The other one that is highly recommended by MSDE is Letters Training, which letters stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. And they also have an early childhood training as well that we use with our pre-K4 students. Currently, we have two teachers in our county that are trained in the early childhood training letters. And they plan to move on to the facilitator training so that they can facilitate and train all of our pre-K teachers in the county. We have three teachers that will be trained in the letters. Each of those trainings consists of 12 hours of training.
So that's a lot about the learning to read grades, those pre-K to second graders who are learning to read and all that brain science that goes into decoding, understanding sounds, putting sentences together. How that plays out in the reading to learn grades, grades three through 12, is coming down to choice and offering more choice across content. In my content in particular, we are working to offer what's known as choice units. So in a choice unit, which we're trying to build at least one per year, students actually have a choice among two or more texts. And they get to pick the text that they want to read that will help them master the standard. And then the teacher uses shorter texts, poems, short stories, excerpts from other novels or dialogue from other plays to help teach those skills. And then the kids take what they learn and they apply it to their own independent reading and talking about it in book clubs or literature circles. Students in particular from poverty are oppressed. And having choice is a powerful tool for them in their own learning. Being able to decide how they're going to learn is so critical. And some of the books we've already adopted, everyone on here except for Ghost, which we'll go out for information tonight, has a character in it who is from poverty. And so we have already worked to include one book per grade level that our students who live in poverty can see someone who is like them, who is experiencing what they are experiencing. Conversely speaking, our students who are not from poverty also have an opportunity to learn. Yes, while it's fiction, they can still learn that while we go through different things and they look different, we're all united in the human experience and feeling love and loss and betrayal. So this is some of the work that we're doing in the reading to learn grades.
So I want to talk a little bit more about the power of choice in regards to those students who come from poverty. Students perceive classroom activities as more important when they are given choices. And so providing choice has many benefits. Ultimately, it increases intrinsic motivation, which is what sparks a student's energy and passion in the classroom. It increases student effort and it increases task performance because it finally creates personal relevance to the student learning. Overall, it empowers students to become lifelong learners instead of passive consumers of content because they have a choice in what they're learning. They're not just taking in what's being fed to them. Additional benefits are it helps students practice decision-making, self-regulation, time management, and organization, which are all identified as career readiness skills. So those are life skills we all use each and every day in the working world. I want to also point out that choice truly establishes something called the Goldilocks Zone. And if you know the story of Goldilocks, right? The finding that just right bed to sleep on. Sometimes it's referred to as the ideal challenge. But what we know about a child's brain, it is actively seeking the just right zone. So if we can find instruction and use choice, this promotes that just right approach for a child. That means it steers away from something that might be too simple and can create boredom, or on the other end, something that's too complicated and can really frustrate a student. So if we're promoting choice, we can establish that Goldilocks Zone in our classroom to find that just right approach. My colleagues, Ms. Passan and Ms. McNeil, have addressed choice in ELA. So I just want to provide a couple additional examples across other contents. Again, I want to remind you that student perception changes immensely when they are given choice. So if we take a look at science, we're talking about providing choice in things like differentiating questions, explorations, and investigations, right? Or creating a variety of products for students to demonstrate their learning. So I give you the hands-on example of eighth-grade science where students decide to use clay and toothpicks to construct three different molecules. And this is out of 30 possible options that they could possibly do to demonstrate how atoms are joined together. So they have a choice on how to demonstrate that learning. In math, we talk about self-differentiation, right? Of a single mathematical task by making choices regarding the task content, solution processes, and working conditions. So if we take a look at a 12th grade class, a calculus class, and please don't ask me a lot of questions about calculus. Math's not my forte. But students, if they have the opportunity, can choose which differential equation to solve that is at that just right difficulty. So it's showing their understanding of the skill, but they're working on a problem that meets that Goldilocks Zone. In social studies, any kind of choice board, right? Your choose-your-own-assessment projects because this is creating a learning experience that reaches all learners. So finding a current event that interests you, reading several articles on the topic, and then recording a broadcast using Screencastify or WeVideo, where you can summarize the articles and infer what the outcome of the event will be. Again, choice. And then finally, when we look at extracurriculars, students truly need opportunities to develop competencies, right? This is a strengths-based approach. So they need to be able to find other areas besides reading and math where they are strong and then choose to participate in those areas. You know, so they can excel in art, they can excel in theater, engineering, whatever it may be. And so they need to be exposed and supported to participate in these activities where they feel confident. The school setting is what provides the opportunities for these extras. Again, going back to our definition of poverty, it's access to those resources. It's access to those extras. And we want to make sure we have those extras at our schools in both early and later on in child development. So we have to introduce opportunities for students to learn to make good instructional choices. And this is what will motivate them and it will help them become increasingly self-regulated and in total control of their own learning.
So I didn't understand either of Amanda's science or math examples, but I did understand social studies and extracurricular and I certainly support that choice is taught, simply not given. And it gives our students a chance to choose the content, to even choose the process or the product in their learning. And as we know, rising waters lift all ships. Choice is not solely for the student from poverty. It is for all students and engages them more in their own learning and their own learning process and in turn, hopefully, their own achievement, their own success. So we hope that what we've shared tonight has helped deepen the understanding of how equity can be used to serve a particular population, especially our students in poverty tonight. Do you have any questions for any or all of us?
Any board members?
I had a question. It just piqued my interest when you were talking about factor one. Children of poverty are not exposed to language. Can you expound on that? And how did they decide that that was a factor?
So students in poverty, you know, they're not exposed to the adults having interactions, hearing, language being spoken. So they don't get to hear and see the language because they're not being exposed. The children are either, you know, with someone else or they're just.
You mean they're with somebody else?
I mean, they could be with, they could, you know, be with other family members because the child's working or with a brother or sister watching them, you know. And they're just not having that.
And they're just not having that chance to hear someone speaking or be able to speak to themselves and be interact into conversation because children learn by hearing others speaking.
I'm going to add to that, too. So I'm not sure, there's something called the 30 million word gap. And that is generally the number of words behind that children by age three who are born into poverty have compared to those children in higher-income families. And that has to do with, if we look at parental language under stress, which we know our families in poverty are focused on survival. And so the number of words used under stress are far less. And I think about myself as a parent, right? It's no, not now, go away, short phrases, those words that, you know, they're not expanding vocabulary. So the 30 million word gap is, just amazes me. If you look at number of words per hour, the difference of a family in poverty versus a wealthy income family, it's 600 words per hour in poverty and then over 2,000 words per hour for a child in a wealthy family. So it's just, when we're talking about factor one in oral language, we're just talking about that language that children are exposed to from the time they, you know, from birth. And really, the more research done, talking to infants, even though they can't talk back, is so critical. And it's that opportunity for serve and return, for that communication exchange. And all of that ends up impacting their language development when they reach school age.
So Ms. Passan, your first example, you have two students, and one's reading at a level one and the other is just about to break into level four, I guess, right? And he's at a three. And I guess your example is trying to sort of describe what equity is about, right?
Yes.
So you had two students. One needed more focus from you. Not focus, but attention.
Yes.
As the teacher.
Yes.
You noticed that. And then you took that student and provided that, you know, time. The other boy or girl was with a group of two or three, you know, a group learning, small group.
Yes.
So I understand that if there's a child in need, you give him more attention. Is that what we're talking about as equity?
If yes.
Or more resources, in this case, your time?
My time, and I notice I'm also pulling additional kids. So I'm pulling anywhere from four to five kids. So that student with the one needs more of my small group time than the student who is almost on grade level who can benefit from collaborative conversation with his peers.
Okay.
I'm still checking on him. I'm still checking on him in the middle of class and saying, what does your group come up with? And listening, and if he's moving forward, that tells me he's good to go for the final assessment. And if he can't articulate it or doesn't have it writing, that tells me I'm going to rotate out a small group, send my first group to go try an example on their own and bring him, and maybe I'll move around the room and see if there's two or three other students who need to rotate into some time with me.
Teachers usually do that routinely anyway, right?
They do that in elementary. In elementary, it is more of a routine. In secondary, we don't have much, as much time with them in the ELA framework. So where we may be doing groups, doing small groups two or three times a week, we know that that is going to increase to a daily expectation in our secondary groups, and we need to start getting ready for that.
Okay. Because I've heard equity described as, by teachers and principals, it's common sense. Is that...
For us, it is. I mean, we've been doing, I've been doing equitable instruction before I knew what equity was just because I use my qualitative, my relationship with the student and quantitative data to meet their needs. And I can give you a thousand examples from my 17 years in the classroom of how I was doing it before we labeled it as equity. So for us, it's very intuitive because we've been doing it for a long time. You know, there's a lot that's changed. Education changed. Education changed when the internet came into inception where you could look any answer up. We had to really figure out how to engage our kids, how to challenge their thinking, how to have them come up with an answer on their own. That changed the game, so to speak.
Sure. And there's children that don't progress enough. Do they get attention with reading intervention? Is that sort of...
Reading intervention, yep, that's it.
Because I've seen them doing our visits in the school in the hallways and wherever they can find a spot. They're working one and two on one. Okay.
And it's really, you know, as we get into budget season and funding, it's really where having a special educator, you know, a certified special educator who is in a classroom with 25 students with five or more who have IEPs, that special educator is so essential in helping with that because then we can run parallel teaching stations. We can run parallel teaching. We can run stations. We can really get into the art and practice of small group instruction.
All right. But then you lose me at the rest, the connection between equity and the rest of your presentation, the three of you. You know, I'm not sure where the connection is because you said, for example, that, I guess these are secondary novels, Born a Crime, Educated, which I've heard is very good, Pride, and Refugee, and some of these others. So these books, these were already approved, right?
All the best.
So were these books specifically for the kids in the lower economic strata?
Nope, nope. They were select. They have characters who are from a lower socioeconomic status. So...
I was going to say, so part of equity is being able to see yourself, right? Those providing windows and doors to students, opening up those opportunities, right? So these are novels, from my perspective, of working in a Title I community where students have the opportunity to see themselves in a book. And that is huge. When we look at families who come from poverty, students who come from poverty, their vision of the world is about three miles outside. That's the world they know. It's a three-mile radius. And so if we can provide them the tools, like novels, where there is a protagonist, where they can really identify with that character, see themselves, and then say, oh, you know, there's hope. Look at all the things that this child did. Look at the experiences they've had. And so when we're talking about the rest of the presentation and equity, we're talking about that this is another major factor and one that really impacts Queen Anne's County Public Schools because our vulnerable population is truly our students of poverty. Our farm students are one, and that's an identifying characteristic. It's in those Comar characteristics, which Ms. Passan addressed. So that's where the connection is. It's just looking at, again, these other equitable opportunities for students who come from poverty.
Okay. Protagonists they can identify with more easily.
Correct. And just to see the world, right? See other opportunities, to be able to see things and understand outside of what they just know in their one-stoplight town of Southersville or wherever it might be. This is the way they learn. They create, this is how we create hope. This is how they learn that there's more outside of their reality.
Thank you.
Can I address that? When you talk about the Goldilocks Zone, to me, it kind of sounds like you're staying in a safe zone. And don't you see that when students are encouraged to do more, they get more benefits out of it? They get, they become empowered. They feel a sense of accomplishment. They've gone beyond. Because when you make something uncomfortable, then change happens. So do you see that as well, rather than staying within the Goldilocks Zone?
I don't think you stay in the Goldilocks Zone.
Okay.
I think, I think...
Yeah.
I'll talk for you.
Okay.
So you start there to build that confidence, to build that skill set, to encourage, look, if you pick this and this is your interest, watch what you can do with it. And then you set them up. That's part of the relationship.
Okay. So it's not like they stay there.
Yeah, the Goldilocks Zone, that's where choice starts, right? This is where I'm comfortable as a student. This is where my brain feels successful. This is where I can be actively involved in my learning, all that. And once they're there, then that willingness to be like, okay, now I'm willing to try this or challenge this, that all builds from helping them discover that just right, that Goldilocks Zone on their own initially.
But it's not a safe place to stay. There's always got to be the encouragement. There's always got to be...
It's creating that hope. It's creating those opportunities, showing them that these are all the things they can do, pushing them to take those AP and honors classes, whatever it might be that we want to show them. You've got all this at your hands. It's just making those choices to do that.
Well, it's knowledge and power. It's encouraging. It's growing. It's, you know, access on a lot of different levels.
Right? So I always say equity is grant me access, give me choice, right? That's what.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Bye, Bridgette.
Thank you.
Our next presentation will be Extended Works Adoptions to Striving Readers.
Can our student board members... Alexis. They look like they're... Eighty.
Thank you for letting me take another spot on your agenda this evening. I know it's a hectic agenda. I'm here to report out on the extended work adoptions that we've been doing via the Striving Readers Comprehensive Literacy Grant. Again, for the record, my name is Bridgette Passan. I'm the ELA supervisor for grades three through 12. That's intermediate through high. So this is the third round. And Mr. Smith and Ms. Morissette and Ms. Harper, I probably should have brought you a lot of this information when we started our work together, when we started with round one and then with round two. But as I prepare for a monitoring visit by the state to see how we've been spending these dollars, all this information has been coming together. So I thought I'd be sure that our board saw it first. So my purpose tonight is to provide you an overview of the books that have been adopted, the potential adoptions. We're bringing you six books tonight. They're being paid for by Striving Readers. And the work is, this work is rooted in Comar's definition of educational equity. So moving right along. So Striving Readers Comprehensive Literacy Grant was a competitive grant. That means you had to apply for it. So each county across the state was encouraged to apply for it. We did in the spring of 2018. And we were awarded $1 million over the course of three years. We got the year one money that had to be spent down pretty quickly. We had to spend that down by October of 2018. That was $400,000. Year two, we got another $300,000. Year three, which was last school year, we got the final $300,000. But due to COVID-19, they have extended that till September of this year. So we have to account for it by the end of June, but we have until the end of September to pay for it. When we wrote the grant, we had to write to four goals. And the four goals are on the screen. We wrote to two in particular, Strategic Professional Learning, which is various conferences that we've attended, and professional development that we've provided for birth to five. And we also wrote to tiered instruction and intervention. So tiered instruction. Tier one is your general classes, your core classes. Tier two is interventions typically in small groups and those are math or reading. Tier three is one-to-one interventions. So, and I will report out to you or can report out to you later on, you know, where a lot of the other money went. But I will briefly say that the bulk of our money initially went to overhauling our tier-two intervention system. When we looked at it, we were offering 27 different interventions across 14 schools, and students weren't exiting reading interventions. So in doing this work and writing for the grant, we ultimately decided on a research-based, ESA-approved intervention, which is READ 180 and SYSTEM 44. And we are seeing, even despite the pandemic, we had a meeting in the beginning of March, and HMH, the company who owns those programs, is always so impressed with our work because our students are making gains, even despite pandemic learning or distance learning. And so I have some data to that end that I'm welcome to come back at another time and share out. But by going down to just two tier-two interventions, we've seen, we've seen great success. And we were making great progress. And then COVID struck and has slightly readjusted things, but we're still moving along. And I'm thrilled to hear that you've been seeing them. Have you been to elementary and middle?
Just elementary so far.
Just elementary?
Yes.
Do you have a favorite grade?
Well, I have to say I'm partial to the pre-K. The little threes, the littles were adorable.
Their backpacks are bigger than they are, and there's stuff in them. That's what I love. How about you? Do you have a favorite grade?
They're all funny to me.
Okay. Okay. So along with Comar, in summer of 2019, the state released a guide for us to use, so a guide to educational equity in education. And I've linked it into the presentation if you have it up electronically. So in writing our goals and working towards how we were going to spend the money because we had to spend it in birth to five, K to five, and six to 12, I pulled some of the major things that we looked at in this guide, which gives support to what the LSS should do, the local school system should do, and to what schools should be doing to ensure equity. Again, the bold print is my annotation done. These are the words that really stood out to me. We had to look at our resources and use disaggregated student data to analyze and identify gaps and equitable, and determine equitable solutions. And I hope that this book choice helped do that or is helping to do that. We had to look, and the federal government requires that we look at student groups by race and ethnicity and gender, which I'll get to momentarily. And we had to assess the implementation of vetted standards-aligned curriculum for any bias or inadequate examination of perspectives. We have not been vetted yet. We are on the schedule, we are on MSDE's schedule to be vetted in the 23, 24 school year. That means they are going to come and look at our curriculum in ELA for K through 10th grade. And I believe math's grades are the same. And in looking at the perspectives that we had coming out, the character, the author perspectives, we had some work to do in providing more equitable solutions there. But let me pause and address the gender gap. And Mr. Schivanelli, our first conversation was briefly about boys and girls. I don't know if you remember that. And it's such, it is an important question. Across the country, across the state, girls do do better in ELA, always. That is no excuse. That is absolutely no excuse. But I've seen it come up in some of the comments related to the equity policy as well. So I thought I'd take this time simply to offer an answer or the start of an answer. So as Ms. Enzer was talking earlier, brain science, a lot comes back to brain science and the difference between girls' and boys' brains because we know that they're different. Whether you're in education or not, maybe you're raising children. You have a boy and a girl. You know that their learning happens differently. Thank you, sir. So this is all a lot of science on here. But again, I annotated some important things that stood out to me. So for girls, they have a connecting bundle of tissues between the two hemispheres, the left and the right. The left that guides logic and the right that guides creativity. And they can crosstalk more. Because that bundle is bigger, they can crosstalk. They can multitask between the hemispheres. They also have neural connectors. Now, all I know that that means is that they can hold on to, their memory storage, their listening skills are stronger. This helps with writing and writing in detail for our girls. And the other, the hippocampus, another memory storage area, And the other, the hippocampus, another memory storage area, helps girls, especially in the language arts area. Moreover, and, and we know this, you know, women can be more emotional in their speaking. And so that plays out as well in, in parsing through and analyzing important text. Now, boys, on the other hand, boys are better at spatial mechanical functioning. That means, you know, kinesthetic learning, using things, moving things, knowing how things work, wanting to know how things work, putting things back together. Their skills are stronger there because their cortical areas are dedicated to that kind of functioning. The second bullet towards the bottom, you know, I think this is interesting, and it even makes me think of, you know, men are from Mars, women are from Venus, that boys tend to zone out when you use too many words. You know, if you've been in a marriage or, you know, you know that too. I know when I'm using too many words on my, either stepson or my husband, they, it glazes over. So, and that happens in the classroom as well. So our boys respond more to symbols, pictures, diagrams. They like to see things. Our boys do, and we know this, they generally do better in math and physics. And we see all these programs out there for girls to increase girls' knowledge, skillset in STEM or in STEAM. I have yet to see any kind of program that really forces boys to enjoy, enjoy literature more. I would love to see the same energy that's going to STEAM and girls and how they're working in computer science, math, physics. I would love to see that same energy. But it's not there yet, but we can do a few things. So in moving on, how can having a choice among books, you know, help close this gender gap? So I pulled some data from another source, and I've linked all the sources in here so that you can, you can reference this. Boys tend to resist stories about girls. Okay, they don't want a girl main character, whereas girls don't. So three of the books I'm bringing you tonight have males as main characters. One of the books, Harbor Me, it has a female as a main character, but there's, there's six other seventh graders in the story, and they each get to tell their own personal story. So I kind of want to count that one as having boys as well, because there's only two girls in that book and four boys. Boys like to read about hobbies, sports, and things they might do or be interested in doing. So two of the books we have tonight are linked to basketball, the book The Crossover and Rebound. Basketball is about the only sport I understand, but I had to look up what a crossover was. And I watched it a lot in the final four and pinpointed it, so I'm, I'm excited about that. There's another book, Ghost, that has to do with track, with running. Boys like to collect things and tend to like to collect a series of books. If you have boys who have read Harry Potter or the Percy Jackson series, it's very popular among boys, they come in a series. Ghost is a book that comes in a series. It's a series of four. We're only working to adopt or hoping to adopt the first one in the series. And boys tend to enjoy escapism or humor, and some boys are passionate about science fiction or fantasy. So for science fiction and fantasy, we have Ender's Game already in grade seven, and in grade eight, Ender's Game, Pardon Me for Looking. We have two books, Ender's Game and, I'll look later. Ender's Game in 7th grade and The Dark Is Rising, which is by Susan Collins. Will is that main character. That is in grade eight. Boys tend to enjoy escapism and humor. I did not get to be a mom, but I do have two stepsons that I lived with when they were in middle school. And I have to say that I giggled at a lot of things in the books with male characters because I can hear it being something that in particular, one of my stepsons would say. So it's timely, it's relevant. And so we're hoping that in these adoptions, we have met some of these needs. We can't do this all by ourselves. So the research also shows that, you know, if parents can help us close this gender gap, there's lots of different things that parents can be doing at home. Modeling reading, having a designated reading time. Maybe you sit down for 15 to 20 minutes in the evening, and everybody reads either the same thing, and you can have a family book study or book club, or you all read something that you want to read, preferably not on your phone, you know, actual text, although your phone is fine, we'll, we'll fight our battles accordingly. Parents and sons reading together and taking time to navigate difficult materials, looking up information together to solve things, understand how things are built, how things can be fixed, using that time when you're in the car to read, and keeping a reading log to show boys the progress that they're making in, in their own reading. So there is work we can do together to, to help our boys. In deciding on books and books to choose, our high school books have already been adopted, but I'll share out what we've done there. So this data slide has our enrollment from the 1920 school year, broken out in gender and then by, by race. So you can see that we're almost didn't even split between male and female, but in regards to race, 79% are white, which we know that. The next highest race is Hispanic at 8%, followed by black at 6%. So prior to the adoption, we had 27 works in, in our high school courses across eight courses. So that's on level and honors. And you can see on this chart that prior to the new adoptions, most of the protagonists, so protagonists are the good guys, most of the protagonists were white and most of the protagonists were male. Now, as we're getting ready to be vetted, one of the things on which will be gauged is our variety of text. So this clearly shows that we had some work to do in offering a variety of text from different cultures, different ethnicities, different races, different backgrounds. And if I might just pause to say, while they are all different, there are differences in the books that, that we've adopted among the characters. What I love, and I could go on and on and on about literature, is that despite the differences, we are united. We are united by the universality of the human experience that literature can offer. And so it's so important to offer students at least one character across their secondary career that looks like them. And it's important to offer students the choice to read something with a main character who doesn't look like them or hasn't had the experiences that they've had in life. So the great news is, these were all the adoptions, and Ms. Morissette and Ms. Harper, Mr. Smith have been part of this first two rounds of adoptions that we've been able to do. And you can see, we have lots of different books with males, with females, Hispanic, white. We even had our, have our first white, non-binary character adopted into English IV. That's our senior English class. So a lot of great progress. The green here, and Ms. Harper asked me questions as you need to, because I don't like charts either, but color coding can help. So I'm hoping, if I can read this, everybody should be okay, because I do not enjoy overwhelming graphs either. So the green is post, so where we've shown progress in increasing. Now, you see that there has been an increase in males. Well, we've increased the black male protagonists in our high school selections. And again, these books are in choice units, so students get to have a choice in what they read. And we've typically paired these with, with a classic or a more traditional, pre-approved, you know, novel that's been approved, you know, in the past 15 to 20 years. And we've seen that the female has really increased. So that's, that's really exciting as well. So I know the high school teachers are happy. I'm very happy for them, and hopefully this will translate to our kids finding more enjoyment in reading, especially at the secondary level. So I polled high schools just to see how these were going, because we bought the text. They were supposed to get professional development in August to, to show them how to teach a choice unit, and that did not happen. But nonetheless, some persevered in offering these texts this year. So I offered them a survey on which they were given a linear scale. So one, the answer one would be not at all on your left-hand side, and five would be extremely. So the first question was, to what extent did students enjoy having a choice between or among texts? There were six responses. A little bit of everything, with, with two of them, it looks like somewhat enjoying it. So that tells me that I certainly have some work to do in, in the day that you decide on your text, because there should be a whole day in looking into the text and learning about the author and learning about the plot and deciding whether or not you want to read it. To what extent did they finish it and enjoy it? Well, again, I only got four responses, but the good news is that half of them mostly enjoyed it, so that's good. They were offered the first round of professional development to guide any conversations that might come up about race, especially race in, in school year 2020, 2021, or socioeconomic and socioeconomic status as well. And Ms. Enzer helped me lead that one. I got eight responses as to how or if that helped. And again, half of those responses were, it mostly helped. The score of three would be it helped, and I have two, one person out there who it somewhat helped. So that tells me I do need to offer more support, more professional development on having conversations related to those topics or critical issues. We did conduct feedback for the high schools as they had gotten their first round of books and were getting ready to get their second round of books. I have 13, 16 responses there, again, on a scale of one through five. So with 13 of them feeling mostly are very prepared to facilitate a conversation, you know, as it came up on, as a few of the books do have race and racism in them as a critical topic.
Let me ask you one quick question.
Yes, sir.
When these response, how many responses were asked for?
24.
24.
24 high school teachers.
So that's what, that, that's, you only got?
Oh, pardon me. This slide that's up right now?
No, the previous ones, like when I see eight responses.
24, so we have, we have about 24 high school teachers.
You're getting a very small percentage back.
Yes, which was expected, again, because of the pandemic. They were supposed to be better supported by me in August with, this is how you teach a choice unit. And so these were just, you know, some pioneers in doing it with doing their own research and deciding.
So the ones that took the initiative or ones that probably responded, the ones that did a little bit extra or?
Yes, yes. But again, I take complete ownership for that, that, you know, they, they had them, and we said, go ahead and do it, but that they do certainly need more support from my end, for sure. And I just put in some, some honest comments. They're looking forward to them. This year, it was just too hard to learn two or three more books that they would need to facilitate small literature circles or book clubs on, but they're excited to do it next year. Okay, so next steps for the high school, as I've said, I need to provide more professional development on introducing choice text, on teaching them, on conversations related to family structure, socioeconomic status, health, and we need to work on units to support this, so that they have lessons or lesson seeds to support their teaching of a choice unit. Okay, so middle school, which we're here for, the books that I've brought to you tonight are for middle school. Here's the enrollment data from 1920. So again, relatively even split between the genders, with the, the white being the race, the predominant race in our middle schools, again, which is information that we know. Prior to the adoptions, we had 28 works among six courses. Again, we were looking at the same kind of statistic, mostly white protagonists. Again, they're the good guys, and mostly male. So we had some work to do to make sure that our middle school students could see themselves in at least one, and I would love for it to be more, but that takes money, which I'll address later on, in a book during middle school. So should the six books, these are the books that have already been adopted, two in ELA VI, although I might move the one to advanced ELA VII. I am considering that. And then Refugee, which does, I admit, happened to be a personal favorite, has made its way into advanced ELA VIII. And that's an incredible book if you're looking for a great, great read. These are the books I'm bringing to you tonight. Half of them are for ELA VI, so to really engage our sixth graders, which we know transitioning to middle school can be difficult enough, two for our seventh graders, and one for our eighth graders. Now, the majority of these books, the recommendations, came from the National Council for the Teachers of English, which is an annual conference up until COVID struck that, that we were able to attend. And the one we attended in 2019 was all, was about spirited inquiry, customizing, personalizing learning, and allowing students to have choice. We were encouraged to look at our book lists, you know, as I've done, and look at our protagonists and make sure, are we able to answer the question? Can all students see themselves in one book? So, you know, we're taking our lead from our national organization, which we get our research and our practices from as a public school system. So, and I also met with our librarians as well, from the Queen Anne's County Public Library, for any recommendations that they might have, and took recommendations, obviously, from our teachers. And so the extensive document you have that we'll get to later on, I'll pause and hold for that, but that's where all of this is, is laid out. So should those be adopted? We'll make great gains in having varying, varying text with different and diverse protagonists, so that all our students can see themselves, have the opportunity to see themselves. Yes, you will see that male does increase, but it's because we have increased black male, books with black male protagonists in them. Female has increased, but we have increased, we have a, we have a biracial female, a multiracial female, and a, and two Hispanic females. So we've made great gains there for, for our girls and our girls of color. Same feedback I wanted to share, just to play transparency, they are just, they, the, the three books that were adopted, they got around, I believe, December. And so they have not had a chance to implement the books that they have, that the three books that had been adopted into middle school. They're going to next year. That first bullet, it looks like a team responded, so they're going to read them this summer and get planning for next year. We gave the same PD on conversations on race and racism in your classroom. Again, just an initial PD to support them in that work, most of them feeling very, that that professional development was very helpful. I gave the same presentation with Amanda Enzer, who was here with me tonight, on socioeconomic status in school. Pardon me? And that presentation, this is feedback from the middle school and the high school teachers, so about 48 or so. We got great feedback on that, on that collaborative PD. And I need to offer the same next steps for my middle school teachers as well, future professional development and curriculum writing. So money. So in order to get one book per gender, per race across the district, these are the grand totals. And this is assuming that a book costs $22 per book, that we are adopting, that we are buying at least two class sets per school, and so that's a lot of money. I understand that. There was no way that I was going to ask for almost half a million dollars in order to do that. So in the budget that I submitted, I did ask for $80,000 to keep this going. And that request I would make over the course of the next, of the next six years in order, in order to meet, to meet this need and to, and to offer choice and opportunity to all our students. Questions?
That was impressive.
Thank you.
To keep going that, that long and that fast. But, so the, the competitive grant.
Yes.
In the last slide, you're asking for $80,000 over the course of?
The grant has run out.
Okay.
So now?
I thought you were on your third.
Yes, we're at the very end of it. So this would be money that I would request, is it capital or operating?
Capital.
That I would need from capital to keep, to buy novels. This is the first opportunity I've had to buy novels. I've had, I've been here for five years, and there's never been money for them until we got the grant.
I got you. Okay. So even under the grant, was it, when you say novels, are we talking strictly fiction? Or was there an option for nonfiction?
So we were able to, we, there was an option. Yep, we have one nonfiction that's in, in 12th grade English, in English IV, called The 57 Bus, which documents an incident that occurred in 2013 in Oakland, California, where a nine, non-binary person was set on fire by a juvenile on a bus. So that is informational text.
Okay, but you could get, for example, autobiography of someone, if you're looking for a black male author.
Yes.
And protagonist.
Yes.
Could be an autobiography or something like that.
Yes.
Because I look at a lot of the titles, and I do do a little bit of research, you know, on Amazon, and look at some of the reviews of the books that we've already purchased. And, and I really haven't taken a look at those that are on this list now. And that'll be questioned for, in a few minutes, how the public can access this list on the internet or on our website. So I was looking at your page six, I think it's this set, page six, Equity and Excellence in Maryland?
Yes.
Okay, and originally, we were talking about the Educational Equity section of the Comar, right? 13A, .01?
Right.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
And I'm looking here, and it's the Guide to Educational Equity in Education. Now, this was a guide from Maryland State Department of Education, correct?
Yes.
That they printed?
Yes.
So that's not actually part of the Comar?
This information on this slide is not part of Comar.
Okay.
The guide was put in place to help us, and we always have to include information of how we're working to make, to meet state or national goals when we write a grant. So when I was going to adopt books, I was looking at this guidance for local school systems and for the schools.
Okay, and that's how you got the grant? I mean, that helps.
It helps, and every, every quarter, I have to turn in a report on what we're doing, what we purchased, and why we purchased it.
Okay.
So this as well supports that.
All right. Because the last paragraph, a little red flag goes off in my head, because I see example given, social justice standards, anti-bias frameworks, and that kind of thing. So just to be clear, there's no mention of social justice in the educational equity part of the Comar, correct?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Right.
That example that the state is giving is different lenses you can use to look at your curriculum. So there are, there are social justice standards out there, there is anti-racist curriculum, there is anti-bias framework for vetting, for looking at your curriculum to make sure it doesn't have those things. Those aren't things that, that we use here. I was just bringing in all the language from.
Okay, but they do tend to, at least the books that purchase in the past, do tend to focus on race relations.
There are a few, yes.
Religion, you know, Christianity, the, the girl from Nigeria.
Purple Hibiscus. Purple Hibiscus.
Hibiscus, right. And?
We don't elaborate on those. We, I, I don't allow for them to wax webzotic on, on religion in a book. They can field questions as they come up, but our teachers always redirect them to talk to a religious leader in the community or their parents.
All right. So I guess the, the best thing to do at this point, I mean, I understand totally where you're coming from, especially now with that, the request for the $80,000. I can see that the fund has run out. I, I thought these were the last tranche of the funds. And so if you could, how do we access that? Is it on the website, these books that are under review?
They're, all six are over there. So my understanding with the MOI process is we, I will send, you know, the big document that you have that I have to address later, that has what, what the committees did and what they come up with and why they approve it? That gets sent out to the public. So the public will be able to read all that. And then we house our books here for the public to come and take a look at.
Okay, but can we get a list, just a list of the books? I don't need all the books, obviously, on the school website?
You will, you will. You will have, now, being able to access the books is different, but you will have a list of the titles.
A list, yeah. So the, the community can look and see what's under review here.
Yes, and they'll get, they'll, there's a letter that I write, the cover letter, to, to Mr. Smith and members of the board. That comes before all the information. There's a list on that letter.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, and that goes out to the public. Once we say, okay, they can go out for, I'm bringing it to you for information, they go out for a 30-day read. That hits the website tomorrow.
Okay.
That big document, and the, here's the list of books, goes out to the public tomorrow.
And so the list of books will just be in that big document?
It's on the first page. So there's a letter to all of you that says, here's what we're doing, here's what we would like to have adopted. And the six are listed, along with what I've paired them with, with what we've paired them with for the classical work. And then beyond that, there's about 30 pages, about three or four per book, where a MOI committee of an administrator, a specialist, a parent, a grade-level parent, a teacher, has reviewed the book, and, and they've looked at the critical issues in the book, and they've said, we'd like to see this adapted for that grade level.
But getting back to budget.
Yes.
At $471,000. And you are asking every, over the course of six years. So have you already?
I asked for $80,000.
For the, for this coming school year? Okay. So all these books won't be bought at one time?
These six will be bought with remaining funds from the grant.
Okay.
So these six collectively, to get them in middle schools, I probably do about three or four class sets, will be $19,000, I believe, is on that yellow document.
I saw that it was 19. That's why I was asking you.
Yes. That last slide is what I need to keep this going, what we need to keep this going, to keep building our libraries, offering choice.
Okay.
Pardon me?
Okay. Now I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Because I was gonna, I mean, I asked this question, but the public will have an ability for 30-day review, and they all should look at these books.
Yes.
Because sometimes these get adopted with no public input, it is input, but people don't look at it, then all of a sudden, it shows up the classroom and somebody has an issue about it. Also, the thing is, if somebody does have a specific in the book that's not, there are alternative books that can be used.
Absolutely, yes.
So if a parent, you know, can opt out with the student, and then something else can be given to them, if that's the wish of the, of the parent.
Yes. We realize that every home is different, and different in what they want their child to read. In the professional development that I did provide, all teachers have been directed to let parents know, this is a choice unit, here are the choices, and get in writing or in a Google survey from the parent that they understand this, and they understand this is the book that their student chose.
And, you know.
It's another support for choice. Now, I don't know that people aren't looking at them. I haven't had feedback on any of the other ones. You know, if there is an objection once they make their way into the classroom, absolutely, that.
Yeah. It's just my short time here. I find this comes up, it's discussed somewhat, some questions I ask, and you answer very, very well.
Thank you, sir.
Parents aren't watching this. And they need to look at these books that we're looking at to give us feedback.
They're great books. I hope they do.
I know. They should. And see what their children are learning and what they can do for them. But also with the understanding is, if there is one that finds it offensive or not in their beliefs, they can opt out for that.
Absolutely.
And ask the teacher to do it. And that, that's a policy.
That's always been the case.
A bit of a policy, so I think people have to understand that.
Yes, absolutely.
There was, I thought, very good some of the sources of each book, along with the actions sheet that we're getting. So that was very helpful.
Good. Thank you.
One thing I don't see on here, as I'm scrolling through, is any of the comments made by the people that were on your teams. You used to do that.
They all agreed. So I'm, so the form that you're looking at now, I made because I wanted to be completely transparent with the community. We didn't have a form for fiction, for works of fiction. And I didn't think that was fair. So I want, so I had brought this to Mr. Paluski when he was here. I had talked to my reading specialists and English chairs, like, how can we let the community know? Okay, here's the book. And these critical issues are not new to these books. They, they come up in, in books for generations. But I thought it best to be transparent.
Because I remember you had feedback on here before, a couple times, some of them. Maybe, maybe.
There was one that I brought the feedback when they disagreed, and I read it.
Yes.
Yes, you're right.
That was, that was two years ago.
Right. And so this, these, they all agree on, they all sign the forms. And I have a big electronic folder with each MOI member's signature on an individual form, that I can certainly give you access to if you need that proof.
So just so I understand, so for example, obviously, we have two 12th grade classes, right?
Yes.
For high schools. So the English Language Arts, I guess it's Level 12.
Level four, they call it, yeah.
Level four. Okay. And so do the English teachers get to set? I mean, if they don't, if an English teacher doesn't even want to entertain any of these books.
They do not have to.
They don't have to.
I can't force a book to be read. I can just provide the support and the recommendations that this is what you can do. I can't force anything. And I would never.
Right. And if a teacher says, all right, I'm not gonna, you know, we're gonna look at another novel, whatever it is.
As long as it's approved, as long as it's an approved, you can go buy, you know, some novel that hasn't, that this, this community isn't aware of.
Right.
As long as it's approved, they can.
Okay. All right. And so the ones that have been approved over the last 20 years, like you said, they can choose some of those, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Okay. No, that's fine. Thanks.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
This is just, just in going through the, the trip, the protagonists, the new adoptions, just because, you know, multiracial is kind of the same percentage as, you know, black, Asian, and even more than the Asian. So, but there's no, everything went up pretty much, except there's nothing still multiracial in your high school. Was there just nothing that you found?
In my high school? Then there wasn't one adopted. Then that's one of the things that I need to get, if we can get me $80,000 so I can keep going.
Well, I just, there was a lot that was, there were a couple of the same percentages, where your protagonist went up a lot. You know, you got, you had quite a few new adoptions, but there was nothing for your multiracial.
For the high school? No, there was none. So I, we do need to, to make that happen.
And is there a consolidated list? You know, I'm gonna have a question. Is there like a consolidated?
You're gonna throw a snowball at me.
He's not gonna hit you.
I'm gonna get suspended. Is there a consolidated list of novels that have been approved over the last, you know, 20 years or, or whatever?
I have a massive list of what's in our book rooms. What's, what I recommend to go with the curriculum is on our website that I have listed what's out there. It's a, it's a really massive document. But if, if there's a book you're curious about, by all means, contact me and I'll let you.
I was just curious of the whole list.
In our book room.
Yeah. I mean, if there is a, I guess you're talking about a card catalog or, you know, just a PDF or whatever.
It should be an Excel spreadsheet.
And your date yourself.
It's a joke.
Dewey Decimal.
Is there a chance I could get a, a look at that? Because if it's on the website, I'll probably never find it. Because it's difficult.
You're gonna go back to Dewey Decimal System.
Massive guy is not, but I can certainly share that with, with the board. And I send that to you, and I copy Dr. Kane in. Is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah. So it's got about seven tabs, and it lets you know what's in every book room. And yes, I will certainly get that to you.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. And I appreciate what you sent me last time to.
Oh, gosh.
Right.
Isn't that overwhelming, all that stuff? That's another story for another day.
I read some good first-grade books.
Yes.
All right.
Mrs. Passon, thank you so much. It's so important that our children have some choice and can identify themselves in the materials that they read. This is so important. We talked about this some years ago, and you are making it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Thank you, board members.
All right. You too.
Thank you.
Okay. Summer learning opportunities.
So as our presenters come forward, first, thank you again, Mrs. Passon.
Thank you.
And as promised, we talked to you. We said that we would share information about our summer learning programs. And we do have an extensive program that we'll be offering this summer. We have with us Mr. Kevin Kentup, who's the Program Director for Rise Academy, also supervises our digital learning. We have Mrs. Michelle McNeil, which you've already met, one of our CNI supervisors, and Mr. Page, who you've already met as well, another CNI supervisor. So thank you all for coming. Let's talk about summer learning.
All right. Well, good evening again. For the record, my name is Michael Page. I am the Supervisor of Science, PE and Health, and Environmental Literacy. And we are here to discuss summer learning opportunities. And with me, I have Mr. Kevin Kentup and Mrs. Michelle McNeil. And the purpose of this is to share our proposed plan for summer learning opportunities in grades pre-K to 12.
So first, we're gonna start with pre-K. So MSDE had shared with us the opportunity for a pre-K enhancement grant. This is a grant period that runs from March 1st, 2021, to December 31st, 2021. This will allow summer recovery for our pre-K program for students entering kindergarten. The enrollment will consist of students who meet the criteria for economically disadvantaged and/or have demonstrated to be at risk for school success. The curriculum that we're going to utilize during the summer program is a four-week curriculum, 16 days of integrated instruction. It's gonna focus on literacy and math, integrated science, social studies, and physical development. It's also gonna include some conscious, conscious discipline strategies for social, emotional development. In addition to the summer program, the grant money is going to run a little bit further past the summer. And we're gonna use that to have transitional support to kindergarten students who demonstrate areas of need. This additional support can be included with tutoring or small group support. That support would take place in September and October. Along with the summer recovery, we will be providing materials to continue learning at home with guidance for parents. That recovery materials would be in math and reading, focusing on counting and cardinality, books for home, and phonological materials. And just so you're aware, we have received our notice of grant approval for the pre-K enhancement grant already. So the next opportunity I'm gonna speak on is our migrant summer program. This is a program for migrant students. We have about 100 students, infants to 11th grade, and our year one immigrants. This will take place July 6th through August 13th at Centerville Elementary School. Transportation is provided, and it is funded through our Title I Part C, which is our migrant. Our focus is gonna be on ELA, math, and STEAM, which is our science, technology, arts, engineering, and math, and really focus on English language acquisition. And included in the program, we have some evening family engagement workshops to gauge our families with learning.
Next, we're gonna discuss some of the universal opportunities for all students in the county. As you know, we've re-upped our contract with ExactPath and Edmentum. We used that last year as a universal medication tool, where every student has the ability to participate using the ExactPath program. It's very individualized. Our students will be allowed to use it again this summer as an acceleration for those that need it, or for an intervention for students who may be behind in certain areas. If you recall, that program gives them an individual diagnostic, so it sets their learning path for them through the summer, and they can work on it at their own pace, on their own time. The second option is our Edmentum custom courses. And any course that we design in Edmentum for high school students or secondary students this year in middle school, we can put it out as an option for students to do on their own in the summer to prepare for the next grade level. So a student may be in biology this year. They felt like they weren't, they didn't do so great in it. They'd like to get a little boost with it. We will offer them our Edmentum online biology course that they can do themselves in summer, just as a reinforcer, to help get them ready for the next level course they're going into. Last year, we also created a custom SAT preparation course, and we will put that out to all high school students again, that they can participate in that, to help build their SAT skills. And I do, and it's not on this slide, and I apologize, but right before spring break, I did meet with Edmentum. They've also created seven new, what they call accelerated courses. And those accelerated courses are designed for English 9, 10, 11, and 12, and for Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry. And basically, they've picked out the essential skills for those courses, and they've laid them out in a, in a shorter program that students can take before taking the class, to kind of boost their readiness. So it's kind of an acceleration for someone coming into the class to get them ready for that. So this will be an opportunity for all students. Now, next, we're gonna talk about the kindergarten through 12th grade summer learning targeted program that we're gonna do. So we've had some development going on so far this spring. We've had a team that met to develop a program outline and budget that we submitted for the SRTWO funding. We have not heard yet back on ours, but we are waiting on that. So we submitted that. We had a committee of 10 members that included principals, administrators from all ends of the county, all grade levels, central office supervisors, the PFI representatives, and so forth. So we've had this group that got together. We've decided that we're gonna offer six sites in the summer. The four Title I schools, Southersville Elementary, Churchill Elementary, Graysonville Elementary, and Southersville Middle School will each have their programs attached, not only with ours, but what they may use for Title I funding. And then we're gonna have a Central County and South County location for targeted programming. So it'll probably be at Queen Anne's County High School and Ken Allen High School. We are collaborating with Title I. We're collaborating with the PFI program. And there are some programs outside of the school system, like Horizons, that are looking to work with SRTWO, with our summer programs, so that they can enhance things on their end. We are going to target students as our first priority. A targeted student is a student who may be behind, according to our ExactPath diagnostic results at the end of the year. It may be someone that the principal and teachers have recommended needs to get some boost in order to be able to move on. We will target those as our first invitations for the program. And then we're gonna offer voluntary enrollment. So parents can let us know if they're interested in their child being part of the program, and, and they can fill in additional spots for the program. In grades K through 8, we are focusing on an in-person instructional model focused on math and reading. We're going to have two separate sessions, each lasting 16 days for three hours a day. In the high school, we're more towards our traditional summer school program. It'll be blended. It will use our Edmentum courses. Students can come in and be part of the program. We will be teaching some lessons, supporting them, but they will be using the online courses. And we're going to run two concurrent sessions. 16 days of instruction for each of those sessions. Each session is 2 hours and 45 minutes. So that means a student who may need to earn two credits might come for a morning session and stay for an afternoon session to be part of both of them in the high school level. What we've done, and what we need to do in order to prepare for this to happen, is we have to develop the grade level reading and math programs for the K to 8 program. We have our supervisors who have put together some frameworks, and we're going to have teachers develop those lessons. We want to advertise as soon as we have the money to get teachers on board and start planning those lessons. We already have materials and text that we want to use to support the program, so we're going to purchase those so that we have them as part of the grant. We need to advertise and hire the staff for the program. I will tell you, this is our biggest concern. It's over 100 and some teachers we're looking to hire for the summer. And that allows to have six different programs. I'm sorry, I'm sweating. It is hot in here.
It is hot. It is.
But that is going to be one of our biggest concerns. It's been a tough year, the tough 15 months for everybody. We want to try to get as many of our teachers involved in this program as we can. So we're going to, as soon as we get to go, we're going to advertise and start hiring staff for the programs. Then we're going to identify all of our students. We're going to put out a parent survey for those that want to be a part of this, along with the teacher and the school recommendations. And then the last thing we'll do in preparation is, once we have kids in line, is talk with transportation. Because for the elementary students, we're going to do the door-to-door service, and middle school students, just like we do for regular school. At the high school level, we'll have pickup locations. They'll be at like, for the South County, it's usually like Ken Allen High School and Graysonville Elementary School, we'll pick them up there. And in the north end of the county is Southersville Middle School, we pick up students there. So that'll be part of our preparation. Some big things that we consider in this program for the summer is obviously what I just described, the transportation. But we're also going to be serving one meal per day for every student. We're going to have breakfast every day for any student who's part of any of our summer school programs. We have to employ nurses this year at all of our summer school sites, obviously for the normal illness or injury concerns and issues, but now with our advanced COVID protocols, we want to have them on site to be able to handle all the issues with that. We are taking into consideration all of our cleaning and sanitizing protocols that we need at the schools on a daily basis. We're taking a hard look at what we're going to need to provide staffing-wise. Not just content teachers, but special educators and support staff, because students are going to need that support in the summer program like they do during the school year. And then the last thing we put on there is sufficient technology provided when needed. We are really trying to, for the K to 8 program, stay off the computers. We are trying to make this interactive, in the classroom, working, get off technology for a little while, and just try to get back into the quote "normalcy" of what a school setting would be like. We still may be using technology, but we'll make sure that we have that available to them, you know, when that comes up. The big piece is the take and conclusion. You going to hit that one? Okay. We talked about outside, I'm sorry. This is really going to be the largest summer opportunity that our school system's ever offered. We're looking to project possibly 600, 700 students that we're going to invite to be part of the program, and that's before our pre-K and migrant numbers are included in those types of things. So this is going to be our largest project. Our plans are very fluid right now. We have to take and work. We don't have anything set in stone, because we've got to see what kind of staffing we can get. We've got to look at how, as you see up there, adjustments by the CDC, MSD, MDH, all those are going to play into how we can do things coming into the summer. And truly, staffing is going to be the key to making this work.
Sounds like you got it under control.
Lot of moving parts.
Yeah.
When, and it's a chicken and egg question, do we know times and dates? Because I know parents, you have two sessions, right, over the summer? When will people start getting firm times and dates? Because people make plans, I'm sure teachers are asking you a question even now.
Yes.
I'll commit, but if you tell me when.
We have a calendar date set, and I don't have it written down in front of me, I apologize, but I think we said we were going to try to start on June 17 with the first session for the K to 8 program. And it'll go to the middle of July, and then it'll go the very next day, start the next session to, I think it's August 13. A lot of this, we're holding off until we know what funding and other pieces that we're just waiting on. And I actually was told that it could be sometime this week that we'd get all those things, and we can start getting all that information out there.
The students that need it the most, that wants to fall behind, is there, are we looking at some ideas to try to make sure they come? Because I mean, they're the ones that need it.
They're going to get the targeted invitations. We are going to reach out to them directly. The principals are going to give us lists. We're going to use the data that we have off of the ExactPath diagnostics, and we're going to identify students. And we're going to go to them and say, we have this program that we want you, we think you need, we strongly suggest, whatever terminology you want to use, but we want you in this program. So we're going to go to those families first to pull them into the program.
But then the other parents will give an option. If they feel their child needs extra help and stuff like that, they can voluntarily move in.
They can voluntarily ask to be on the list. And once again, you know, we look at our spacing, our seating, our staffing, and we will try to plug in as many people as we can into those positions, you know, for the program.
And our transportation, we use our buses or our contract buses?
Just like we do for the school year. We use a combination of ours and contract, because of the number of students we're going to need to transport.
And this is coming in the second round of funding?
SRT2, yes.
That's the $3 million that we just got allocated.
Correct.
Okay, so we don't have a budget for this yet of any kind?
For ours? We submitted a budget request in the program. It was submitted in the grant, yes.
We've been allocated that money, just have it released to your program.
We haven't gotten a grant approval at this point.
Oh, for the second, we haven't yet.
Can the board members see this budget request? Can we see it?
You can see the application, absolutely. We'd be happy to share that with you.
Okay.
So there'll be like June 17, and another one starting in August?
Like July 15, somewhere, July 16, somewhere in that range.
So it'll be a 230-day?
It'll be 216-day, because remember in the summer, we were open four days a week, Monday through Thursday.
So it'll be a four-week?
It'll be like a four-week program.
Right.
We have to watch out for July 5, which is a holiday this year on a Monday, but yes, we're going to have.
It'll be Monday to Thursday, because Friday's a...
Correct.
And parents that have questions, who should they address them to right now?
I would assume that would probably be me.
Yeah, but give us a minute, because this is what the plan is. The dates are established, the hours, just like we just presented. What we're waiting for is, one, the approval, the money to come through, the funding. And two, then we will start advertising for staffing. So, you know, we love to open the doors wide open, but if we don't get the number of teachers that we need, then, you know, there will be some limitations. But, you know, normally what it is, is we're going to have a coordinator for each one of these sites. That's written in the grant, and we'll put somebody, parents, in touch with that coordinator.
They'll have a contact at the time?
Yes, we did budget for a contact at each site that'll be kind of overseeing the daily day-to-day during the program.
Because I just find, I mean, and I know you can't commit now, because you haven't got the grant yet, you don't know what staffing you're going to have, but people will have questions.
Absolutely.
And that's, you know, and hopefully get answered, so they can make a good decision too, and get these kids in here and up to speed.
I would say we have a number of things sitting in the starting gate, and as soon as we get to go ahead, we're going to start building curriculum, start hiring folks and all that. So it's ready to go, just we need to go ahead to say the money's there.
Gotcha.
Question about transportation. So if I want my child to do one of these, he's not an invite, but I want him in there, but he only needs like the afternoon session. I'm going to have to transport him?
For a high school program?
For a high school program?
No, we run a, the way we run the high school program is there is a morning run that brings them to the first session, then there is a second run that brings kids in for the afternoon, and then takes the morning kids home, and then there's one that leaves after the second session to take students home.
Okay, thank you.
So how much was this budget that was sent in?
I did not see the final number that went, because there was some editing done on some...
Yeah, I can't recall the exact amount for the summer learning, because we have PPE in there, but this was the grant that was for $3 million. So there's PPE in there, there's summer learning. Summer learning was the big...
It's a significant...
Yeah, it was the big, you know, expense.
And this grant was supposed to last us for three years. We were supposed to spend it over three years, and so we're going to be...
Two.
And we're going to be spending it all for this summer learning?
No.
No, it's not the whole thing. Like, when we submitted our budget, there was not, there was concern, we had to put in money for the food service that we wanted to take care of, because we didn't know if they were going to extend the free meals program like we've been using this year. So money like that has to go in until we know if something gets carried over. And I believe since then, we may have heard that, so there was some adjustment in the funding of that. So I don't know the exact final number. It's a large chunk, but it's not, it's no more, it's definitely not even half of the money, I don't believe, but it's a large number.
Other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Great information.
Okay, you want to take a 10-minute break?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're back. Our next report will be Human Resources and Substitute Bus Driver Report.
I make a motion to accept the Human Resource Officer and Substitute Bus Driver Report as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All listeners, if you have a say aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it, 5-0. Transportation report, new bus purchases?
I make a motion to...
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Oh, okay. Well, you make the motion, then you have the discussion, and then you can have a vote.
Make a motion.
All right. I make a motion to accept the transportation report that Ms. Pullen has given me to show us.
Second. Okay, you're on.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Carla Pullen. I am the interim chief operating officer. Per our LLC transportation contract, any buses that are 13, 14, or 15 years of age are eligible for replacement. These are coming before you this evening, because it will give us a change in the PVA, which is the vehicle allowance that is paid per the contract. So we have three 15-year buses that are proposed to be replaced, four buses that will be replaced by used buses that will be purchased, and they will go with the PVA that's listed. So it will be the year of the bus that will be the PVA that will be changed to for those specific contracts.
Okay.
So from 2020 to 2021, there was a 1.8% increase. 21 to 22 will be a 1.4% increase. So the PVA for a new bus for 2021, 2022 is 20,000, and then it's prorated based on the age of the bus from there.
So we'll have, have we covered this increase in this budget that's been proposed? Only 5,000 of it?
There are five. Five buses that are proposed for new. So at this point, we have three...
Okay.
...that have been reported. The others will not have that high a PVA.
But we'll stay within the budget that we've... Okay, thank you.
We believe we will, yes.
Any other questions? Call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pullen.
Transfer request.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Kane, and board members. Tonight, we bring before you a transfer request for budget amendment two. The first one is for administration to transfer to the contract account of $109,510. And then mid-level administration, those instructional salaries to the mid-level, to reclassify it to the correct account category, totaling 70,000.
Okay, the question I would have is the transfer, and it says increased legal fees.
Yes.
Do we have a little list of that, the board can see, or anything?
Yes, I do have it in front of me here that I can make copies and share to with everyone this evening.
And that was sent earlier today, when you requested it?
Copies were. When was it sent?
An email was sent out.
Us today?
Yes.
You asked for it this morning. I think we got the message from Mrs. Wright, and we sent it to you.
Okay, I didn't have time to look at that email. I didn't.
I didn't see that email at all.
Did anybody else see it?
No.
I haven't looked.
I think it was just sent to you.
Just sent to me?
Mr. Smith, but we can make sure everyone else gets a copy of that as well.
Let me see where it, look.
And in addition, I can go make copies of this right now, too.
Yeah, I would, but other member, I'd like to see, I'm sure other members would, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. I'd also like to ask a question, is what is the... Pardon me. The instructional salaries to mid-level administration salaries, who's, what is that for, the 70,000?
That is the Title I coordinator that was under instructional salaries. And being a coordinator, they fall under mid-level administration. So it's just a reclass from instructional wages up to your mid-level administration.
And this person was grant-funded before?
No, it actually was, this person actually was fully unrestricted, and we're able to get a portion of her salary restricted and unrestricted, because they do more than just the Title I.
Oh, so it falls in our different categories?
Yes.
And that's, okay, that's where you're...
Yeah, we did talk about that when we were going through the budget.
And we made that account for next year for fiscal year '22. This gets in line fiscal year '21.
Who's, I mean, I don't have the copy, I mean, I don't have that email on my thing. And you said to Queenence County, my...
Send it to Dr. Kane.
Yeah, I don't have it here. So it's not so much as an increase as it is just reclassifying?
The second one's reclassifying within, or between categories.
Okay, thank you.
And the first one is between, taken from savings from utilities and moving it into contracted service under administration for legal fees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. All right. Thank you.
It was sent at 10:54, I'll resend it.
Red-headed stepchild, thank you. The approved budget for legal fees under administration was 70,000 to start off the year, and as you can see, to date, we're at 123.
Thank you, ma'am.
If we account for the current trend, that's where the budget request comes in at 109,510. I looked at last year, and it was around 90, 92,000 for legal administration. So you're projecting it out to be that?
If I had time to look at this, on the Carney one, that's the one that the president would either, Kami had done it or I up to this time, March the 25th. The other ones, I guess, Dr. Kane, that would be ones you've used or had for the school system?
Did you want to table this for our next meeting in April?
Oh, if you need to do it, I mean, do you need to do it now?
No, just before it gets into the negative, the administration gets into the negative. We're not allowed to have a negative category.
Any board member suggestions?
I just, during my tenure as president, I never saw any of the...
No, no, no. What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, you or I saw whatever, like the 10, 20, or 8, 20 up to December, you probably saw.
There are a few on here that I never saw.
For Carney?
No, for Chandler, so.
Well, no, I haven't seen Chandler.
I know. I think we need to table this, please.
Of course.
Do it at the work session, please.
Yes.
Okay. Motion.
Thank you. Any motion to table this until the next work session?
Second.
Thank you.
Any pro discussion? Can you call up my role, Ms. Wright?
Hi, Bill. Board members, please respond. Why don't I call your name? Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Chilinelli?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
Morsak?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
I have five in affirmative that will be tabled until... Is it the next meeting, or what did you say?
To the next work session.
I think now the work session on 21st.
Thank you.
Next will be April 21st. Okay, our next thing would be math renewal contracts.
Good evening again. For the record, Amy Smith, mathematics supervisor and gifted and talented.
Good evening.
Other questions? So we have a couple of contracts here. There is a, where do you want to start? You want to start with Math 180?
That's fine. For the Math 180 contract, that is our current intervention program for the middle schools, grades 6 through 8. And so that's just our usual program that we use to continue an annual renewal process for that contract.
And then we also are bringing forward Agile Minds.
Agile Minds is our core learning curricular component for grades 6, 7, Geometry, and Algebra II.
So both of these are continuations of programs that are already in existence. Agile Minds for $91,508 with FY22 budget. And this is, we recognize that we have not gotten an approval just yet for the FY22 budget. We wanted to put this in front of you right now, so that when the approval does happen, we can go ahead and get moving, and we don't waste time waiting for the next meeting. So this will be contingent upon approval. The Math 180 and the amount of $31,908, $908, that is also a renewal. That one, we would be using operating funds from the current year, so those funds are already in existence.
The first, Agile Mind Educational Holding for $91,508, which will be the next year's operating budget, do I have a motion to approve depending on the budget source? Is that what we're...
It would be operating FY22.
FY22. Upon approval, FY22 budget. Do I have a second for discussion?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Who's made it?
Well, I'm bringing in something.
I'm moved.
Okay, seconded.
Okay.
For purpose of discussion, it needs to stay, our motion needs to stay, say that upon approval of the 21, 22 budget, because we don't even know if we're going to have the money enough to spend it on this.
Well, I maybe didn't speak loud enough, but I thought I said budget source, operating FY2022, upon approval of that budget.
Okay, thank you. Also, are we, are these sole source?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't, how do we procure them?
You mean going out for like a bid process?
Yes, the bid processes.
Because we have been in the former contracts, and this is the kind of an extension renewal as far as, but it's now year-to-year that we have to go through.
And we and we haven't looked at anything else?
There is, there has not been an adoption committee to bring that forward to do other reviews of the intervention tools or the current ones. Last year, if you remember, we did grade eight and Algebra I.
That's right.
For text adoption. Because we have to phase them in as far as where our budgets are at.
Any other questions by the board? Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries, 5-0. The next one will be Math 180 renewal. HMH Math 180 contract renewal in order to provide students with mathematics intervention, appropriate resources and support, grade level mathematics for the sum of $31,908 and 8 cents. It is in the current operating budget FY 2021.
Done, moved, second.
I have a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Okay, informational items. Thing on here, let's make sure I'm on the right page. Good evening, start right off.
Good evening. So I am here again this evening to discuss with you the contract that we have with Sedexo, which is our food service provider. This contract was successfully bid and awarded in 2019 with an option to renew four times. So that would give us a total of a five-year contract. For this year, we are in the second, going into year three, this will be our second renewal going into year three. We are recommending renewal for the 21, 22 school year with an increase of 3.4% to the management fee. So this essentially covers the cost of the raise in minimum wage for Sedexo and for their employees. The total cost of the increase is $6,950.12. It is sustainable after reviewing with Mrs. Towers with the fund balance that has been accrued in our food service amounts and budget. And so we're here this evening to make you aware, to give you an opportunity to ask questions. But just to let you know that we are hoping to approve that and to give a renewal and extension to this contract.
So in years past, we've been in the negative on that food service balance. So now all of a sudden, we have a.
We were not last year, last year we were, we did have a surplus. And last year, we approved a 3.7% increase as well. So this is actually less of an increase than what was afforded last year.
How do we, how did they operate this year with us not being in school? Would they, did everything turn out all right?
It did, I think it's been difficult for them. It's very much been a roller coaster. So they've prepared to have all of their staff back. And then we have in November decided that it wasn't safe, so then they were to lay people off again. There have been times when they've ordered food for us to be back in the buildings. And then we are not coming back in the numbers that we have suggested. And therefore, there has been some ways that they've had to repurpose food. Thankfully, much of it freezes and they were able to reuse it at a later date. So this has been a roller coaster year for Sedexo. They've been great partners with us. They have come up with new and innovative ways to reach the families that really do need food service. And to just stick right alongside with us through this year, unprecedented year.
Because don't we guarantee him so much?
We do, so there are two parts of the contract. There's the management fee, which would receive the 3.4% increase. And then there's a guarantee on the sale of food. So we have a guarantee number that we provide to them. Anything over and above does go into our food balance account.
But correct me, did we, we didn't get the money back on all the food that we gave away during COVID, during last year, 2020?
That I can't speak to just because it was not in my wheelhouse at that time. But I can get some information. I know that there was something that had to do with the reimbursements and I can get you information on that. But I do believe that we've recouped.
Yeah, I think that we did, but we can double check for you. But I think there was a long pause in there where we were waiting and we were waiting.
And maybe that's what happened and it just didn't come through until later.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, but as long as we have given them 143,000 in sales, which whether they're handing it out at the, in the parking lot or they're handing it out in the classroom, I mean, it's still sales.
Yes.
Okay.
Are we pretty much, I mean, I know the state or federal government was reimbursing a lot of that, is that going pretty good or?
Yes, so at this point, we know that we will be serving the free meals through September 30th. We still don't know what will happen after that time, but that will be extended into the new school year. And that at that time will reassess.
That for all students?
That's correct, for all students.
For September 30th?
Yes. And that's with our summer meal program, which is what we've been utilizing throughout this year.
We know before, so we go back to school in the fall, how long it'll be, I mean, it just seems odd to get them back in and then pull the rug out for 130 days later. I'd rather, you know what I mean?
We felt the same way and we inquired about that. And essentially, it's been extended that far because we want to make sure that we give families enough time to get in and submit their applications for free and reduced meals. If you recall, we've had a whole lapse in a year's time now that we do not have current applications on file. So we wanted to make sure and that's.
You want to get it back in school and do that?
That's what that time accounts for, yes.
Okay, makes sense. Any other questions?
I make a motion to accept the Sedexo food service contract extension for FY 21, 22 for the amount of $211,365.60.
Have a second?
Second.
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor would say aye, aye.
Aye.
Ayes carried, 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coombes.
Okay, expenditure reports.
Back again here.
We like seeing you.
Thank goodness.
Probably next month, see a lot of you.
This evening, we have before you the expenditure status report by category. As you can see, in total, the available balance as of, as of the end of March 31st was a little over 12.6 million. And the breakdown is as such listed.
For next year's budgetary purposes, when do you think you'll have a handle on what fund balance we could possibly have at the end of the year? And I know it's been an odd year, so it could be tricky, but you know, we're going to, you know, we're presenting tomorrow night to the commissioners. We'll find out what's funding from the county, we know what the state and federal is. I'm always worried about using fund balance, but if we have fund balance this year, at least know if it's going to be in a negative or positive way.
Right, I think the goal was May or June's meeting that we can kind of review that.
Okay.
Ms. Harper has tasks for open positions and any savings, so we're actually working on that now. So we should have that in May or June.
When do the commissioners strike their budget, when do they strike their budget?
It'll be toward the end of May.
End of May, so.
They have to do it by the end of June, so.
You know, it's like everything else, some things come in late, some things are on the front loaded.
Right, right, and like the Verizon hotspots, just draw your attention to that. Dr. King and I were talking about that today. The technology grant and broadband broadband grant ended March 31st. And that covered a lot of our hotspots in addition to the technology grant that ended 1231. There's a reopening grant that we have applied for and that we got allocated 404,000. That will help offset that cost of those hotspots till the end of June. If not, it would have been picked up and unrestricted at that point.
So our hotspots will be paid for at the end of June?
Through the end of June with the reopening grant for 404,000 in total. There's other things that we can allot, but it's right around 150 for the hotspots.
I mean, our system's now back four days full with virtual on, and some students still doing virtual. But that at the end of this year will change. Done little gadgets, do we get them all back?
Yes, they are ours to keep.
They keep?
Yes.
So, but they're numbered, so we know who has them?
Yes.
So the parents or the students bring them back?
Yes, they have their own identifiable number.
And after probably June, after this, end of this year, they will, I say, when the year, end of this school year, they won't be needing them any longer that we know of. And then that monthly, they'll turn them in.
Yes.
And we'll have seven or 800 hotspots.
Right, but we will have to turn off the Wi-Fi to them.
Yes.
We have to, we have to cancel the contract.
Right.
Which right now is being paid for by a grant, correct?
Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm saying, in June, in June, the connection goes dead. And the hot, the physical hotspot comes back to the board.
Yes.
And then we see what we do with them at that point.
Yes, Mr. Coombes and I have had that conversation.
It's a big box.
Will that be done prior to end of school?
As we're seeing some that aren't being used, they are being shut off and asked to return. So we're starting to see slowly trickled in from what I'm hearing. But as the end of June, they'll all be required.
I just imagine after students aren't in school, it's not going to get any easier to get them back.
Exactly.
I know.
He has a plan in place if they have to get those back.
Gotcha, thank you.
But I imagine next school year, some, some of our students are still going to need access to those for homework and.
And some may still need access over the summer because we, as you just heard, we're still going to have exact path available for families if they want to use it.
But that's, but that might be a direct cost to this board though.
So I think that if, if the school district decides that they want to continue to allow the use of the hotspot, but the family has to pay for the Wi-Fi, you might want to think about that.
They could keep the physical machine, but pay, now, if they did that, would they, I mean, because it was $20 or pretty reasonable price for the hotspot.
30.
30, I mean, that's cheaper than I'm paying at my house. So they would, they wouldn't, they're going to bill us, they want to bill us and we bill the parents, they're not going to want to.
Right, Mr. Coombes has.
And we got some options?
Yes, he has an option through Power School where he can bill the parent. And we have been working behind the scenes to set up on school funds online. We're getting ready to roll it out where parents will have the option to pay online, where they don't have to send money into school with a student. They'll actually be able to log in and submit the funds electronically.
And the ones that don't have that ability will make some other arrangements for?
They can pay at the school, yes.
Okay. Thank you, any other questions for the?
The next one we have before you is a transfer notice. And this is within the category. So within the transportation category, we are asking to move 12,000 from supplies. And that's savings from fuel to vehicle insurance. It actually increased last year and we need to account for that for 12,000.
Now, is that for our buses or the contractor buses?
That's for our buses.
Our buses.
And you'll notice that that's the negative that's under the transportation line item here. And then the next one is maintenance of plant. We have savings in salaries. We'd like to move that to contracted services for 50,000. And that was for the remediation services at the middle school.
Don't we have any funds in the building, funds left over anywhere to pay for the remediation? Past building funds anywhere?
It might be under, is there any in capital, Carla? I'm not sure if that qualifies or not because that's repair and maintenance specific, I think.
That's why, that's what I'm asking is.
Let's check.
With coming out of salaries, when, I mean, it's not.
It's a one-time thing, so it's salary savings, it's a one-time savings this year that we have in maintenance that we'd like to use for the contracted services.
We can assess some of the county only funds for some of the past building projects that have recently culminated to see if there's any savings. The state funds that are allotted toward that wouldn't be eligible.
Okay, yeah, because they're, they're specific.
Yes, project specific.
Any other questions? Do you have a motion to approve?
You don't have to, this is for information.
All right, you're answering, you're sending a letter to, I thought I saw a letter for Chris.
That's the one we're postponing to talk about next time.
Gotcha, I'm sorry, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Apologies for second review. First one, promotion and retention of students.
Mr. Evans? You got this one, Ms. McNeil?
Permission and retention, yes. Good evening, President Smith, Dr. King, board members and executive team. For the record, I am Michelle McNeil, Supervisor of Early Learning, Title I, Title III and Migrant Education. I have before you the retention, promotion and retention policy 632 and promotion and retention regulation 632.1 for second public review. Are there any questions?
Has everybody had a chance to look at this and review it?
I did, did we have any comments on that?
There was one comment asking, that was wondering about to define satisfactory level. The regulation was too vague using satisfactory level. That was the only comment.
How could we address that?
Well, I looked at some other regulations within the state. And a lot of them have used the terminology of performing according to expectations. So it wasn't satisfactory is at the elementary, middle, high schools more to specific credits. So you know, it's, it's based on, you know, their performance, their report cards with their standards, if they're meeting their standards. So it depends on how in-depth we want to go. But like I said, when I looked at some others, Montgomery and Anna Rundle, it talked about performing. Students who are not performing according to expectations, so.
So if we changed it to that, would we have to put it out again for first read in order, if we made changes to it now?
No, that would just, that's just part of the process. So you would, if your committee meets and you make that change, if that's what's approved, then that's what will happen next.
Okay.
Well, if the committee.
Policy committee is not meeting until the 21st, right?
But this is going to go out, this is going to go out for second read.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
So you still have an opportunity to get comments.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, I make a motion to send out for second read promotion and retention policy number 631 with regulation 630, I'm sorry, 632 and regulation 632.1.
I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 5-0, ayes have it, Dieter.
Thank you.
He's going to go back to apology for that change though, look at it.
Well, I'll email that now, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
638 student behavior intervention.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. King, board members, executive team. For the record, my name is Jolene Smith, Supervisor of Special Education. I bring before you policy 638 and regulation 638.1 for second read. There were a few comments or opinions. One was related to the timeliness of the submission. We actually started the process for this revision to take place in 2019, but because of COVID and everything else that kind of transpired, it got delayed. So I recognize that that one comment was made. And then the other comments were related to the training that goes into place. So all of our staff are trained in verbal and physical de-escalation techniques. It's always encouraged and actually it's in the policy that we will use the least intrusive method before we ever go to anything more intrusive. And we only deem, we only use what is deemed to be appropriate for the instance that occurs. As I noted with the red line, this is an existing policy, it's just some verbiage that was being changed. Any other questions?
Any questions? Okay, it's at second read, do I have a motion to?
Done.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, send it back, send it out for final.
Aye.
Aye, aye, 5, Ms. Helen?
I said aye, sorry.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Our next one will be policy number 640. Our next one will be policy number six forty-eight, educational equity.
Good evening, President Smith, Dr. Kane, members of the board, executive team. For the record, my name is Matt Evans, Supervisor of Student Services. We have before you the educational equity policy six forty-eight and regulation six forty-eight point one for the second read. There were a hun, there were a hundred and twenty-three comments. I did go through the comments and really looked for common themes and made some tallies. So in summary, if the comment, well, first I want to say that some comments touched on more than one theme, so they might be represented in more than one area, and some didn't really address the policy directly, so they weren't counted at all. Thirty-six in the comment specifically said yes, thirty-six specifically said no to the policy in the comment. Thirteen responses said that we need to identify inequities in Queen Anne's County Public Schools. Thirteen comments had, had said that the policy is divisive. Ten comments stated the policy is required by the state. Nine comments stated that there's racism in the Queen Anne's County community. Eight comments stated the policy is important for Queen Anne's County. Seven comments stated that Queen Anne's County Public Schools is behind other systems in the state regarding equity. Five comments dislike social identifiers in the policy. Five comments felt the policy promotes political indoctrination and activism. Four comments represented that equity training is needed for parents and staff. Three comments referenced that the policy is racist. Three comments mentioned specific lines to be amended, and that was in the regulation, and I have them listed there, B number seven, number ten, C number one, number thirteen, and eighteen. Three comments dislike the term implicit bias. Two comments felt the, the policy promotes critical race theory. And two comments felt there's a concern regarding teacher diversity in Queen Anne's County Public Schools.
I also noticed the word boilerplate came up a couple of times in some of the comments. They kept saying that we just boiler plated what, you know, Maryland, what MSD put out, and that we didn't, it wasn't reflective of Queen Anne's County. Also, and I agree that the, expanding the expectations, maybe calling them desired outcomes rather than, you know, or, you know, make, calling it something else, we, we talked about that in the policy committee.
Right.
Making, making it an expectation or, you know, what we'd like to see in the system, the school system. I just received Mr. Burns's notes on it, he's just getting it to us, and there was some corrections in that as well that he's recommending. So I don't know how to move forward with this.
I think, given the amount of comments, and Mr. Burns just gave us his input, and I know all the board members have looked at this, you know, in detail. I've made a lot of comments in PDF form. I think the best thing to do would be to, I'm not sure what the word, if we can pull this, send it back to the committee? Ms. Harper?
You don't need to pull it, that's what these reads are for. You give your comments to Ms. Harper because she's, she represents the board on the committee, and the committee discusses whatever it is that they need to discuss, they consider the comments that are made by Mr. Burns, and they move forward with whatever it is that they come to consensus to present for the next time. So you still got another, until the next board meeting for the second read, and you make your changes, get them to the policy committee.
Well, would the suggestion be that we, we've had comments that you've reviewed, but not, I guess, with the whole policy committee? Or they, has the policy, the policy committee seen all the comments and talked about them?
No, we have not met regarding the comments.
Well, but it suggests to me that we take it back to the policy committee as it's written now, with, and incorporate whatever you feel, and the policy committee feels the comments, both from board members, Darren, and everybody involved, and then we'll bring it back for second read next month?
Okay.
Well, as Dr. Kane just said, we send it out for second read now.
And you make your changes.
And make the changes.
What it's for.
And then come back next month with whatever version that we're, that...
Well, then, 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 all I'm trying to do is bring it back for second read next month so that the public can see it, have time to look at it, we have time to look at it, and then it can, we could do a final vote in...
We can still send it out now. We can still make the changes. When we come back next month, if it is revised in such a way, we'll send that out for first read.
For first read?
Yes, because if we make significant changes in it, it needs to go back out to first read to go back out to the public.
Okay.
I mean, we have to be transparent about this.
I'm all for that.
Okay, I mean, I, there's, you know, this is, this is a community issue, this is, this is, this is what we have to do for our district.
Okay, so we'll send it back to...
But we'll just send it, we'll just send it out again.
After the second read.
Yes.
And that there's major changes and we'll have to address it at that time?
Yes.
All right, so hang on, so this is second read, right?
Right now.
Yes.
And so, when's the committee meet again?
The twenty-first.
Okay, and you're going to take all the comments and all the recommendations from the board?
I'm asking Matt, yes, okay.
Yes, I have all the public comments, and I have Mr. Burns's email as well.
Okay.
All right, and if it's significantly changed, it's going to come back? Or when we meet again for the third review? It's actually going to be a second or first read?
What I'm, what I'm hearing is if it's...
If it's so changed?
If it's significant changes, then they have to come back and go for first review and then work through the process.
Again?
Again.
Go through again.
And I mean, and the only thing I can, I'm, I'm not on the policy committee, but there does seem like an awful lot of contention and comments on this thing, so it looks like it could be changed. But that's the policy.
Well, that's what I was thinking, yeah, so...
And then we vote on it, if, if, if there's no changes, then it gets voted up or down next meeting anyway.
Right.
And that, if the policy feels they don't need to change anything.
Yeah.
Make a motion to send out education equity policy number six forty-eight and its regulation six forty-eight point one for second, second review.
Second.
Okay. And we, and as far as the discussion, that is going to have a second review, but the policy committee is going to note, the comments that have been made by various groups, to look at this on April the twenty-first, you said, Tammy?
Yes, and we have a work session that night.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Ray, can you call roll?
I will. Ms. Penelope?
Yes.
Ms. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Moore, is that?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Please.
May I bother you, Burbin?
Thank you, bye, assistance.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you.
It's very important, as Queen Anne's County is the only school district in the state that does not have an adopted equity policy, education equity.
Yes, yes, and I, I did have that slide if that, if that question came up. We are, we're the only, all, all districts in the state have adopted the policy at this point, education equity.
We're going to take our time, and you know, Matt, I asked you, I think the last meeting for the MAE template that you used or the... Can you send that to me, because I haven't received it?
So it is in the, yes, so I have in that slide, no, actually, it was in the, it's linked in the earlier slide I did in...
Oh, was it?
The presentation with Ms. Ford.
If it's linked, then I can, I can find it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Textbooks for adoption, public review, math. Ms. Amy Smith or Michael Page?
All right, good evening again.
Good evening.
Aye.
For the record, I'm Amy Smith, Supervisor of K to twelve mathematics and gifted and talented. What you have before you is review for textbook adoption. We, despite the COVID experience, we were able to bring in a textbook review committee and reviewed several different textbooks for our elementary. The committee chose the iReady Classroom Mathematics that has a textbook resource as well as an online resource for students, and we are looking to have it reviewed to implement for grades three, four, and five, the intermediate grade levels in elementary school for the fall. The program comes with a consumable text for six years as well as an online component program. And for the first year of implementation, iReady is providing us with the full diagnostic assessment and a learning pathway for each of the students as a helpful tool for this last year and a half resource that is actually directed right at the elementary level and pathway to move students forward if they're progressing, again, age-appropriate, where we found exact paths sometimes at that particularly intermediate grade level kind of pushed them beyond really where their scope of extension should have gone. So that's what we're looking at for this one. The textbooks are over there for public review, all grades three, four, and five. The text resources offered language components for our ELL students, so it had translations in Spanish as well as some other versions. If needed, then we could reach out and be able to tap in. It also provides learning resources for our teachers, full grade level in the elementary scope. So while we're implementing grades three through five, part of the component is they are provided the curriculum from K to five so that within the classroom, teachers have the ability to be able to differentiate and support students' learning throughout. And that is a total dollar amount of two hundred seventy-six thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents
from capital of this year, do we have that, Ms. Towers, I'm sorry to ask you?
I believe it's from, isn't it from operating this year?
No, it's...
No, sorry, capital, that's right, capital.
Capital twenty-twenty-one, do we have that?
Yes.
Okay.
And so this we're putting out for review?
For public review information, and then after the thirty days of public review, we'll bring it back for possible approval.
And the public can, I mean, it's going to be...
Yes, the text resources are over there as well as the write-up from the review committee and the pieces that they found, the strength component. It also provides them a resource link to be able to view samples of some of the online supports that students would be using.
I'm making motion to adopt the iReady Classroom, fiscal impact of two hundred seventy-six thousand, four hundred fifty-four dollars, seventy-nine cents from the FY twenty-twenty-one capital budget.
Do I have a second?
This is, this is not for doc...
I apologize.
Yes.
I may, maybe amend, my, amend my motion, since it's still out there, to put out for public review, the iReady Classroom.
And, and you don't, and you don't need a vote to put it out for, for review.
Gotcha.
This is all for information.
Okay.
And when we, when we bring it back after we've gotten comments and, and, you know, whatnot, then we'll, then we'll need that motion.
Okay. So, okay, great.
This could come back in our, this could come back in our May meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Probably, I mean, that's...
Yeah, absolutely.
Fantastic.
And then, at that time, we'll have the write-up and all the stuff and...
At that time, it'll be an action item for us to be able to approve for use of the budget.
And the same thing, I'm assuming, happens where you have a chair, a couple of teachers, and a citizen.
So our review committee had administrators, teacher specialists, several teachers from different areas around the county that were involved in the review. And they were the ones that had the voice, I simply facilitate conversations, and they went through using a rubric tool to evaluate what would best support them. Recognizing that our elementary teachers have done a phenomenal, phenomenal job, and they've done it without text resource for just about five years now. So they've been working very diligent using our curriculum resources, but it's a lot of copying, and then with the virtual world, it's been a lot of development of materials so that it can be used both simultaneously online as well as in the classroom. And so this resource, one, helps that planning component, but it also allows that transition between both face-to-face and some virtual components for students who are still going to need those virtual transitions going through.
And the evaluation form is in your board docs, you have that along with the folks who were on the committee.
On the committee.
See, I was just trying to buy them outright, I was just trying to beat the gun, man.
I'm with you, Ms. Harper.
Let's just buy them all, let's go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thanks for sticking around.
My pleasure.
Mr. Page.
Just go, that's my book, let's go.
You heard. Good evening again, my name is Michael Page, I am the Supervisor of Science, P and Health, and Environmental Literacy. And today I bring forward a textbook adoption for public review for our earth science textbook in high school. Our, the science department is requesting funds in order to purchase the LabAid's EDC Earth Science textbook and its associated resources to replace the existing textbook. The current textbook is not aligned with our state standards or the next generation science standards and is sixteen years old. So today, I would like to put this forward for public review.
Okay, and the same thing, it could be available to the public to look at?
Yes, sir.
I suggest everybody look at it if they, you know, they need to, and give us feedback if there's any questions. Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, have a good night.
And we have Mrs. Passan back again for secondary novels.
And hers don't cost as much.
No, they don't, and they're from a grant. Okay, good evening, members of the board, Dr. Kane, the executive team. Again, my name is Verda Passan, I'm the ELA Supervisor for grades three through twelve. Tonight, I am bringing forward six books for public review into middle school curriculum. Alman's Voice by Hannah Khan, Ghost by Jason Reynolds, Song for a Whale by Lynn Kelly, The Crossover by Kwame Alexander, Harbor Me by Jaclyn Woodson, and Rebound by Kwame Alexander.
This is pretty much what we heard earlier from you, so...
Yes.
Like I said, my only opinion is, please read them. You know, you guys do a lot of work looking at this stuff. You know, we talk about characters and people and how people look at different things. And I think the citizens need to know and look at this stuff because, you know, we're five people up here making these decisions, and you recommend them to us, but everybody needs to be involved, I think it can make a lot better end product, if everybody understands.
And the good news is, is that there's, the parents from each of the middle schools have served on these committees.
Right.
So they're already out talking to, you know, other parent friends in the group about the books. We've had, you know, we had a school, you know, write one and put one in, so hopefully there's already a buzz about them. I certainly hope that people will take the time to read them, they are all wonderful.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, have a good pass, get home safely, thank you.
Good night.
Okay, letter to buy a new bus.
Good evening once again. So as part of our bus fleet for Queen Anne's County Public Schools, these are our county-owned buses. When the vehicles reach fifteen years of age, we're mandated to replace them. We do have funding requested for fiscal year 2022 for a bus purchase. But to have that bus ready by August for our twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we typically issue a letter of intent to the vendor now to make sure that that order is placed and in production. July first, 2021, provided that funding is included in our allotment from the commissioners, then we will issue a formal purchase order, all of this will be contingent upon funding.
This is just for your information, there's nothing to do.
And the funding's coming out of capital?
Yes, the funding is requested in capital.
In capital?
Yes. But I will make the caveat that this is one of our special needs buses that must be replaced. So if this is not funded by the commissioners in the line item that we've requested, which is our new bus purchase, we will have to take a look at how we could accommodate that otherwise.
How many buses do we own?
Say that again.
That we own, the county, I mean, how many do we have at the warehouse, do we have twenty, twenty-five?
It's in the area of thirty.
Thirty? So basically every, we're going to buy a bus, one or two buses a year?
Yes, typically...
Yes, typically, it's one or two. This year, it's one, I think in the last couple of years, it's been two. There were a few, several years ago, we got ahead of the curve and bought two when they were at their 14-year and then two when they were at 15-years. So we weren't bombarding everyone with four in one year.
But a point you referenced to the commissioners is, it's going to look like one bus a year to maybe two. Or a three-year period might be zero, but it's going to average at least one a year.
That's right. And we would like to look out and project that as well so that we're keeping on that one per year. So again, if we have on this 14-years, we'll try and replace it so we're not overwhelming.
And I think that'd be good to, you know, and I can or Dr. Kane can explain to the commissioners that in capital, or you can when you're there, that, you know, this is an ongoing thing. And we're trying to space it out, not, you know, four years of zero and then all of a sudden need eight buses.
Yes.
You know, so that's something. Okay.
That's correct. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Okay. Our next work session will be April the 21st of this month. We'll have a board meeting on May the 5th and another work session on May the 19th. All board members, did they get a copy of the attendant next year's schedule and everybody see that? Maybe we can look at that and give Jackie some feedback or go with that. Okay, so I have a motion to adjourn our regular meeting?
I make a motion to reconvene in closed session.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Five votes passes. Thank you. Good evening.